As our students, to lead us in the pledge, please. Who's doing it? Carter?
Ryan O'Grard. I've heard allegiance through the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, indivisible.
Thank you. There is not a report out of closed session this evening. Do we have public comment on non-agenda items? Antonin. All right. And we'll move to reports, and we'll begin with our student board report.
Good evening. For this week's report, I had the opportunity to go to both Top of the World Elementary School in Elmoreau and meet with the student councils at each of their respective schools, and got some info directly from the students on what was going on at the campuses, as well as some feedback on some various things I was interested in and learning about their experience on. One thing I just want to highlight when I met with the Top of the World Student Council was the well-receivement of the art lab under Ms. Woolsey. Every student, you know, that was one of the main things they could not stop talking about. So I think, you know, continuing to support our arts is really important. As well as the library, I was surprised on when Ms. Romano told me, she was there when I was meeting with the student council, how many students go in the library before school and check out books. I think it's incredible. And so that was just kind of some updates from Top of the World, as well as they have their angels nights coming up, their family night. At Elmoreau, with the Sea Lion Senate, when I was talking to students, very similar story. The art lab was really, really well received there in the sense that it also connected to what students were learning in class. In fact, that's what they told me, they said, well, we know what we're learning in the art lab correlates to what we're also learning about in class, and we're doing connected projects. So I think that was really important, something I heard about. And then the other thing, too, was I heard some student input about food and them working with Mr. Dixon and the district about how their input's going with food. In fact, they wrote, when I came, they wrote out some things, you know, what they thought about the food. So I thought it was pretty funny, you know, they wrote things before I even came there. But overall, they really were enjoying the improvements I was saying to the food. One of them is, that they talked about a lot, was the addition of the salad bar this year, was students being able to choose what they get to eat for the fruits and vegetables, not just having a bag of carrots. So I think that was a positive. And then, as well as the angels game, the honors chorus from Elmoreau is going to be singing the national anthem there. So that's just something to keep on, keep on the radar. And then at TMS, there's a musical performance coming up, Suzical, hosted by the theater program at Thurston. And then the Blue and Gold Awards are coming up as well, where teachers and principals recognize excellence within their students. And that's on June 4th in the Artist Theater. And in the high school, it's been a really busy week. We started off this week with AER showcases. AER stands for Authentic Exploratory Research. It's a really unique program that I'm very fortunate to be a part of, that allows students to research whatever they're interested in. So you have students researching aircraft and aviation, to myself, researching nationalism in Yugoslavia. You have so much agency in that class. So during tutorial this week, students from all grade levels are allowed to come into the library and learn about what other students are researching. And it's really, I mean, it's amazing, like, students, you know, never would think that, you know, other students would be interested in these things and learning from other students. It's incredible. And then FLO, our environmental program at the high school, had their senior packing event yesterday, where they packed over 60,000 meals for students and children in Africa, which was incredible. So the FLO program put that on at the high school. And then the one last thing is the school site council met this Monday with myself and some other students there, providing input on the SBSA plan. And there were some really interesting, you know, kind of marks going forward that. But I really wanted to just highlight the student input that was, you know, brought into that process. I think it's really important that students are a part of that. And I was glad that we all provided input. That's all for this evening. Thank you.
I was curious, what did they pack in the meals?
I actually got to try it. Mr. Shen, who the FLO coordinator, sent me home with the pack. It's like a mixture of like lentils and rice. And, I mean, it's really cal, like, really, it's very calorie dense. I mean, it was a lot of calories for one package, but, I mean, it was decent. It tasted all right.
How long did it take to pack 60,000?
Yeah, I was, I was a part of it. It was actually really fun. But, um, we went out during fifth period on the field, and it took just about the whole period. And we split into teams, and they made it really fun. They added a whole competition aspect to it. They had this gong, and it was like whenever we reached a certain milestone, like 20,000, 50,000 meals, they would get someone, and we would just hit the gong. It was super fun. But, um, I did, I did get it to go, and I was really happy about it. But it was really fun.
Mufasa, please.
Good evening, board members. I'm happy to report that we finished negotiations yesterday. And we want to thank the district for the collaboration in working with CSEA throughout the process. Now we're eagerly awaiting mikes changes and revisions, so that we can review it. Following that, we'll proceed with our ratification and six-ten process. Realistically, we anticipate holding the contract vote at the Welcome Back Breakfast, where we will have all classified staff together at the beginning of next school year. We want to thank the district and our PTA's for organizing the fantastic Staff Appreciation Week. The theme was very well received, and much looking forward to the summer coming up, as things are really busy. We all enjoyed it, and all the little things that ended up in our box every day, and the food. And lastly, I'd just like to remind the board that, of our support for the proposed new calendars tonight, and we hope for your endorsement and favorable vote on the changes.
Thank you, and we have Scott Wiegelt for LaBuca.
Hi, nice to see you guys here tonight. The teachers would also like to thank the administrators, PTA, everybody for the luncheons, the goodie bags. The teachers definitely feel appreciated last week, and we feel appreciated most of the time. But, I mean, it's nice to get those little additive things going on. Negotiations, I believe, are going well. We're down just to our last two little things. We're hoping to finish that up on June 4th and end on a strong note. That's our goal. We're meeting for like a half day, and we're really hoping to finish that up. And just the last thing is, we're still very much committed to the calendar of the committee, and we're hoping that we'll see that voted on tonight.
Thank you. We have Dr. Valoria.
Good evening. It's been a busy couple of weeks, in no particular order, all the different things that have been going on. Again, the AER presentations, I was able to actually get by last night as well, and to tutorial. And it is quite impressive, and I heard that from a lot of the adults that came by last night when I was there. I think the mentors themselves are so proud of the students that they get to work with when they're standing there next to their poster board, and the students explaining what's going on. So Carter got his, he was up there as well, and, but just, yeah, it was quite impressive. I'm blown away. We attended, Jeff and I, the May Revision Workshop this week, virtually. Probably one of the more depressing May Revision Workshops I've attended in the last couple of years, but thankfully, things are looking better for our budget than our neighbors, definitely. We had the LCAP Community Meeting, which the intent was to bring some community partners in, so Boys and Girls Club, we've got a Playhouse, and several others came. We did a kind of rotation of the goals, tables, shared kind of what we're working towards, and we're able to get some feedback. I also attended the AXA Region 17 Awards Dinner, where we got to actually finally celebrate officially, both Victoria and Julie for their award. I know it's a busy time. We have band concerts. I was able to hear the middle school warming up yesterday, as I was bouncing between both the AER and the band. We had our Sopa Governance Meeting yesterday, with Saddleback and ourselves. We approved the Sopa Plan. It'll be coming to you all shortly as well. I also attended the FLO event with the full intention of watching. You can't watch. They put you right to work. So I was working as well, sealing bags. But a lot of fun. The students have a blast, and they play music, and they really do work on the competitive spirit, because they were, the students really do want to beat each other. And last but not least, Staff Appreciation Week. It's, it is literally a whole week, which is fantastic, because we know how hard our staff work. Special thanks to Jen and Victoria and Anna Karen, Kelly and Ellie in the front office. There's many more, but just putting all those things together, getting them out to the school sites. I know our staff really appreciates all the work that goes into it, but it's, it is quite the feat. So much appreciation to the HR team and the team at the, at the office there, who do the, a lot of the labor on that. So that's my report.
Thank you. And when you're thinking of that step, but a lot of work in on that student flow day of doing the meal prep, there was a lot done to get ready for that.
Well, and I would say, a good number of tables actually had teaching staff and classified staff. Inhere Nets helping as well. Some of them blend right in and look just like students, but,
Well, yes.
You know, some of us stand out, like myself. But, no, it was fantastic to watch the staff right alongside. I was with Kristen Kay and Angela Pallon, so I wasn't the fastest sealer, I can tell you that.
Thank you. We don't have school resource, so we'll talk tonight. Okay, so we move to our executive cabinet. Mr. Dixon.
Thank you, President Vickers. I'll be brief. Just kind of echo what Dr. Valoria and others have said. Staff Appreciation Week was, is just a fun week, and it's great to get out to the sites and get out and intermingle with everybody, and it's really a positive all week. And so I think Dr. Valoria has his leadership in that, because it is fun to be a part of. And as you also mentioned, we did attend the School Services of California Workshop on the Governor's May Revision. I won't cover that now, because I do talk about it quite a bit when we get into our budget, and I will show the differences between what the state impacts will be for the LCFF districts, as well as what we need to consider as far as our local factors. But it was very informative. It was like getting a fire hose of information over the course of three hours with one break. So we're still going through quite a bit of it, but it was a very, very good workshop, and we look forward to not only presenting our budget tonight, but also keeping our eyes on what's going to happen with the California state economy as the ripple effects of the May proposal comes to fruition between now and the end of June. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Cullen.
Thank you, President Vickers. I wanted to begin, well, first, again, kudos for sure to the district team that supported the Staff Appreciation Week. It's a heavy lift, and it's great partnering with the PTA's to celebrate all of our staff. I do want to begin by sharing our appreciation for the dedication and support that Megan Schooler has done with the TOW, supporting TMS and TOW. We wish her well as she transitions to the Folsom Cordova Unified School District in the fall, where she'll start in August as an elementary school principal. This definitely brings her much closer to her family in the Sacramento area, and she's looking forward to that. I continue to appreciate the collaborative approach with our unions as we navigate negotiations utilizing the IBB process, as Lisa has shared. We did come to a tentative agreement with CSEA, so we're excited about that. And then with LaBuca, we have our Day Five negotiations on June 4th. We also held our last District Wellness Committee meeting of the year, just this afternoon, where it was nice to have the sites kind of share all the activities that they're doing for the well-being of their staff. We also reviewed our last two district-wide wellness challenges, as well as our end-of-year COM app report usage. And we're excited to announce we have over 50% of our employees are accessing the COM app. It's an amazing platform for just health and wellness. So we're excited to have, continue to offer that resource to our staff. So that's all for this evening, and I wish you all safe and enjoyable, moral day weekend.
Thank you. Dr. Mayberry.
Thank you. The General Services Team has quite the extensive update later today with a Local Control and Accountability Plan. So I'll leave all of our updates for that time. Thank you.
Thank you. We have public, two public hearings to hold this evening. The first is, do we have comment on Public Hearing A, Laguna Beach Unified School District's Local Control Accountability Plan, LCAP for the year ending June 30th, 2025, prior to final adoption as required by Ed Code Section 52062.
President Vickers, I see none.
Thank you. So I will open the public hearing. There are no, no one's coming forward, so I'll close the public hearing. We move to 7B, Laguna Beach Unified School District's Budget for the Year Ending June 30th, 2025, Prior to Final Adoption as Required by Ed Code Section 52062. And I will open this public hearing, if there's anyone come forward, ask questions. And I'll close the public hearing. We have Section 8, Information Items, Instructional Services, Laguna Beach Unified School District's 2024 to 27 Local Control Accountability Plan, LCAP, and Budget Prior to Final Adoption as Required by Ed Code Section 52062. Do we have a public comment on this?
I see none.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you, Dr. Mayberry.
Thank you. Good evening. I'll be, I'm going to start us off, but I'm going to, Dr. Keller and Dr. Kennerberg will be joining me as well, as Mr. Dixon, Mr. Dixon, when we get to the annual budget at the end. And we'll, again, we'll, we're presenting our goals and actions and data around our district plan. We'll be stopping after each of the three goals for questions, or any things, clarifications that come up. So, again, this is, this is, we'll present here the three goals, the annual budget. This is really a big complication of all the different reports we've shared with the board previously, the surveys, the summaries of our committee meetings, the different components of the written parts for the Goal 1, Goal 2, Goal 3. So this is really summing it all together into a slide deck. So most of this you will have seen already, that we've provided earlier. And this is, includes all the different feedback we've been getting over the many, many months leading up to this, focus groups, and our, our community partner convening that we had this week. All will be included. We recently had this reviewed and approved by, or planned by Orange County Department of Ed. So we'll share all this information today, and then we'll bring it back on June 10th for approval. And there's still opportunity for the community to give input on any of this. There's a link in this presentation, as well as there continues to be one on our website as well. So a quick, I'm going to share just kind of a quick overview of the, of the Local Control Accountability Plan. So these are the state priorities that really is required as part, state and local priorities that are required by the state to be addressed in here. And it's really about addressing the whole child outcomes. Everything from academics, social, emotional wellness, to school climate. And so we'll, we'll go into each of those, this one, and the biggest component here, really, when this started years and years ago from the state level, is really to address the achievement gaps of our most impacted students, right? And so that'll be state level, those are identified as English learners, foster youth, homeless youth, students who are economically disadvantaged. So you look at the actual plan, that is the primary focus of the plan that's being addressed in there. There's a lot of our work most, was also included in there, but those are really the main acquired, required components. You look at the demographics and the student population that we have. These are our students we have this year, as well as those important student groups that are addressed in the Local Control Accountability Plan, or LCAP. Those percentages stayed pretty similar this year as a prior year, with 2% English learners, 2% immigrant students, 11% students with disabilities, and 19% economically disadvantaged. This next shows the actual eight state indicators that is required in here. This actually leads to the state dashboard that comes out in the fall, after all the data is collected. So this, again, includes different factors related to college and career readiness, from AP pass rates to state syllabi literacy. It also includes graduation data, chronic absenteeism. These are metrics that the state requires that schools address and look for, look for potential gaps or areas of improvement. And then we have the local indicators listed here as well, on this slide. So these are around some basic conditions, whether we have highly qualified teachers, where we are, and updating any recent content areas or subject areas that may have new standards or frameworks, as well as parent engagement, family engagement, and access to a wide variety of courses. This is the scope of the dashboard. So when you're looking on the state website, you'll see this, ideally, when you would look at this, and, because it's a growth model, so you're looking at status of that year, as well as growth for the prior year. So you may be at a high status, but if you didn't grow, or you went down a little bit, you may not be over to the far right, which is the blue area. So what, an area we've talked on here, that has been really important, that we've talked about extensively the last year, is chronic absenteeism. You'll see that there as in the yellow, right? And so that's an area that we've done a lot of different plans and interventions to help address. And Dr. Keller will be speaking to that a little bit later, and some of the outcomes we're seeing up to this point in the school year, with a few weeks left. But again, these are kind of those, those state and local indicators that we submit to the state and then gets published. Every district publishes this in the state of California. Usually around November is when it comes out. They're trying to move it back a little bit, so it might be October this year. But traditionally, it's typically released by the state in November. But this is a look at last, this is actually a look at last year's. The key funding pieces that you'll land in there is around supplemental funds. Well, as a community funded districts, we don't actually get these supplemental funds, but we have to identify them there, and those are for those student groups. So what that includes for us, coordinator pays for some important salaries of these, some of these staff people here, as well as programs that they support. Coordinator of Family Engagement, English Learner Support Staff, Director of Social Emotional Support, some of our mental health student support specialists, after-school programming, mentoring. So a lot of programs fall within this. Obviously, you can see that, you look at that list, it's not, that's not the funds that cover it all, but it helps with that. And so whenever a district is looking at their supplemental funds, or their Title I funds, it would look through the similar group of student groups that may have achievement gaps traditionally, and how do you address those? So those are the ones that our funds, that go to our designated funds, that we actually don't, don't actually receive, but we do designate them. And then just as a reminder, as we go through this, this is a continuous improvement process, right? So an LCAP is approved officially, it's a three-year, mostly static plan. We make little adjustments and updates to it each year. This year, we're setting, we're doing another three years with the same goals. Some of the actions adjust and move, which we'll talk about, but it's an ongoing process. This is, we're working through this all year long. Typically, in the fall, we come back to school, we're doing a lot of data analysis. We're, all these different spring assessments at the state level start to come in. We're looking at programs we're offering in the fall. We work out, we work with our school site councils and PTAs to share some of that data, and start looking through the goals, as the school plans are aligned a lot, as well as in alignment with our LCAP, which will bring those forward in June as well. So when you look at this chart, you'll see just the ongoing data collection. We're looking, we're meeting with focus groups. We do that typically our education, our community partners, which staffs, students, parents. That survey typically goes out around January, February. The last couple of years, we've actually done it in March. So, but we have other surveys that we're collecting as well. So it's a wide variety of data that we continue to collect. And then we get to the spring, is when we start to put it together and develop the goals and actions, and the details, working with business around the budgets that align to those goals and actions. And then the Orange County Department of Ed reviews it, gives us any feedback, which they've done. Dr. Kennerberg is an amazing writer for this, and so they typically come back and say, this looks great. So it's, that process happened earlier in this month, so we're bringing this forward here today. But this is really, I use that visual of like the ongoing, continuous feedback loop that we do all year long with our, with our community. Some of the development process, a couple of key parts in here is the annual community survey. So this year, we had definitely an increase in participation, an increase of almost 400 respondents, so almost 2,000 responses between all three of those groups, which is a really good representative group of parents, staff, and students. The, when, the questions on there, if you see those as a parent, you know, they kind of talk through those, the three different goal areas, academics, social, emotional wellness, and school climate. We asked some questions around communication, engagement. And so this is our big annual survey, but again, we ask a lot of other surveys along the way to help address this. But it was all, for students, it was all fifth, this one in March, was all fifth through 12th grade students. And then we had about 30% of our families responding to it as well, which is a very good, for most districts I talked to, was a very high response rate. The other piece of this is student panels. We had worked with, we had some fifth grade students that we met with. We did some student panels at the middle school and high school level. They actually are often, we're capturing their experience and their insights. It's a wide variety of students, sometimes it's student leaders, sometimes it's students from different, different, different types of classes or interests. So we can really get that more qualitative set of input that we use to help, think, look at what the types of trends and interests we're seeing around what's working, or what areas we might improve. And then we have another key component of that development process, is the LCAP Advisory Committee convenings, which our, our, our union groups are a part of. We have parents, staff, a wide variety, I think we've had almost, times, one of the, might have been up to 80 people at. So a really large group there. We had three different sessions between March and April with that representative groups, where we did some panels, and we got feedback, additional feedback to help develop the plan that we'll share today. So some of the common themes, before we jump into the first goal that we came across. One was just looking at relevant learning experiences, something we've been talking about for a while, but really trying to work on that through, we've brought, through unit design, through different ways, that we're really going to make this authentic and relevant for students. It helps academically, it helps with attendance, it helps with behavior. It's a very high priority of all of our, our staff to find these experiences and make them engaging and meaningful for our students. We know that that will help learning extensively. Another one on was a continued to common themes and strengths around college and career readiness, and how we're able to personalize it, especially as we've been building out the counseling services. We have a lot more opportunities for students, we're building out our CTE pathways. So wide ways for stu, a wide variety of ways that students can think through the college and career readiness as they're getting ready for that post-secondary pathways, whatever that may be for those students. Another one that continues to come through is the, just the, it's really foundational for our community around the connections with the community and families, and kids talk, all talk about it, their connection with the community as, the school community, as well as the local community. So, and they're, and how important that is to them being in this community, and the care between each other and those relationships that continues to come up. And the last one was the focus around MTSS, was a very, considered a strength. And that's something that we really got hyper-focused on coming out of the pandemic, and we continue to try to keep the focus to focus, right? And so we build out that multi-tiered system of support. It's really trying to address the needs of all students and meeting them wherever they're at, and trying to find a set of interventions, a set of extending activities that students continue to grow, whatever level they're at, whatever their interest is. And so we want to continue to keep that a focus as a, and a strength for our school district. Some questions or wonderings that came up along the way these last couple of months? This one talked a little bit about more, what are some ways can we continue to expand solutionary learning opportunities? So more of the project-based learning, place-based learning, or again, kind of making that connection to the relevant, authentic learning. But how can we have more, more opportunities for students where the learning feels like it's meaningful to them, and they have multiple ways to show it? Not just on a traditional assessment, but they might be presenting it, they might be out in the community. So they want to continue to find more ways to do that. Another one is how may, how may we promote understanding of the post-secondary pathway options? Right? A lot of different options. And we know that the students in this community are very strong academically. They have a lot of college options, but we know that there's also other options that are important for kids. And we don't want them to be, want all of our students to find the right fit. Not necessarily what their friends doing, or what somebody else is doing. What, whatever they leave us, want them to be career, college-ready, for what the best fit for them is at that time. Another part, pattern that came up, or trend, was how can we extend or expand our understanding of diverse viewpoints? Thinking through all the different lenses of where people come from, their backgrounds, their, their families, and how do we bring all those different viewpoints in and honor them with different view, with different, different topics to discuss, to learn from each other, to better understand each other. So that was one that came up, and then, as well as how are we supporting career awareness at the more primary grades, right? Where you're really looking at students' strengths, their interests. It feels, it'll feel different than it does at the high school. But how do we continue to expand all the work that we've been doing at the secondary level, so that kids are really finding more ways to think about what they like or don't like at those younger ages? So those are kind of the common themes. We'll talk a little bit more about those as we get into them. Again, these are the three goals that are in the plan and that are recommended to continue with these three goals. The actions shift a little bit and adjust, but they include all the things that we know are still important, right? It's, so these include the, the work we're doing around our MTSS. We want that to continue to be a priority, priority that we've been doing for a while. We want to continue to have strong AP and honor class options for students. But also includes some of the newer priorities that the board has had, and the staff have had around, like expanding our early learning program around structured literacy programs for students with dyslexia, to the new preschool, it includes actions, or newer actions around environmental sustainability and literacy. The Library and Information Services, we did a report on at the last board meeting. They expanded counseling and health services. So a lot of services that we're trying to expand and adjust, those are included. Some of those are new in the last year, some of those are new in the last couple of years, but those are all included in this plan, in this plan as well. So with that, oh, sorry, one more. You also see reference to the learner profile in there, because this is really that piece that kind of grounds the work that staff does around looking at these long-term outcomes and skills for students, and guides the instructional model that they want for students, right? That's personalized and authentic, but it's also competency-based and inclusive, so all kids can access these type of learning experiences. So you'll see this throughout the plan, and as well, in some of the presentation slides tonight, that this will continue to guide our work going forward, as this was. As this was a two and a half year development process to get to this point with it. So with that, I'll hand it off to Dr. Canenberg.
Evening. Thank you so much for allowing me to join you. As you know, college and career readiness for all students continues to be a top priority in our district. And since it has been said that a goal without a plan is just a wish, we are going to highlight some of the aspects of our LCAP plan with you this evening to talk about how we can take college and career readiness from a goal to a reality for our students. Some of the key success indicators to determine how we're progressing towards getting all of our students college and career ready. You're very familiar with, we've reviewed them throughout the year and you also saw them represented on the dashboard. So our CASP data, our LPAC data for our English learners, and of course, our ongoing iReady diagnostic data, AP coursework, dual enrollment, CTE, these are all aspects that are embedded within the college and career readiness indicator that you saw on the dashboard. And while we think those metrics are really critical, we also think it's essential to involve our students in this process. So we equally value perception data. We always want to check in with our students and our families and our staff and see how they feel that we are doing and meeting their needs and to determine areas to continue to grow and improve. As you saw throughout the year, our graduate snapshot is really important. This is our baseline data that we will be working from for many of the metrics that you see identified in Goal One. We will soon have our results for the class of 2024. We continue to be very strong in all of these areas, but we always have our eye on continuous improvement. When we look at college and career readiness, we want to continue promoting multiple opportunities for students to earn college credit while in high school and to continue to build enrollment and build students taking opportunity, taking advantage of these opportunities. So of course, AP enrollments and passing AP exams is one important metric as are our dual and concurrent enrollment in addition to our CTE articulated courses and students completing CTE pathways. So we look forward to updating this data for you in the coming months as we wrap up the school year and have an idea of the total amount of college credits earned at the end of the year. You're very familiar with this data by now. Our CASP data really serves as that driving metric when we look on our California dashboard in the areas of ELA and math. So this is our jumping off point for setting our goals for the year. Our students are wrapping up CASP testing as we speak. So we will have our updated data for you in the next few weeks and you'll be getting a comprehensive report on that. But when we're setting our goals for the next year, we want to take a look at where our students ended last year and of course, continue to grow and improve across all student groups. You can see represented on this slide that we definitely have some opportunity and achievement gaps with some of our significant student groups. So really, our LCAP is all about identifying those gaps and layering on additional services and supports for our students so that we can ensure that all of our students are achieving at high levels. Our math data also similar. We saw some great growth when we looked at the year prior, but that incremental growth and continued improvement is really critical. And our all of our teams have used this data in addition to other quantitative student performance outcomes to really set goals for the year. You heard our school plans for student achievement mentioned a little bit earlier. Those also take a deep dive in looking at student outcomes and developing goals at each individual school around where the students are performing in ELA and math. iReady data continues to be essential for us to have real time actionable data so that we can identify student strengths and areas of growth in real time and respond immediately. Our students are currently wrapping up their iReady testing for the spring. So we will be reporting to you. And I know we talked earlier in the year about the growth that we saw from the beginning of the year to midyear. And I can tell you in the sneak peeks that I've taken out of the data, I think that we will all be very pleased with how our students, the continued growth and how they ended this year. We continue to see students respond very positively to the high quality core instruction as well as the targeted supplemental interventions in place. We are seeing students meet their target goals for the year and even surpass them. The student experience is a huge component of evaluating our progress in the area of college and career readiness. We know that test scores and graduation rates are important metrics, but we want to dive deeper than that. So we continue to ask our students questions around their experience as learners. So we were so fortunate to have over 1,200 students this year participate in our annual community survey. And that represents about 80% of our students in grades five through 12. So we got some really great feedback. And while our students continue to overwhelmingly agree that they are participating in challenging and relevant learning activities, it's our goal to get that number as close to 100% agreement as we can. You see there, we have some students who are in the neutral range. They're feeling a bit indifferent about these areas. So through our instruction and reimagination of what the learning experience looks like in the classroom for students and building in opportunities for more challenging, meaningful and relevant learning opportunities, we anticipate that these numbers will continue to climb. One of my favorite aspects of doing the LCAP development work is talking to students through student focus groups. Here's the thing, they will always tell you the truth. Sometimes they're brutally honest, but that feedback is critical in determining what our next steps are as a district and what we need to prioritize. So one of the questions that we asked across all three grade spans, elementary, middle and high school, was what learning experiences do students find most valuable? So you can see here, elementary school, middle school and high school. The common theme that we see across all three of these levels is that students are striving to have connection. They want to collaborate with their peers. They want to work on projects. Anything that has that real world application is something that our students value deeply and are seeking in their learning experiences. They love to have choice in their learning and how they demonstrate understanding of that learning. When they're researching a topic, they want to choose the topic because it matters to them. And they want to know that what they're learning has relevancy and application to the world beyond the four walls of the classroom. So this is something that all of our teams and instructional teams and school leaders are going to really be focusing on enhancing and striving to elevate over the next three years. These are our Goal One actions at a glance. So this is how we are going to get our students to the point of being not only college and career ready based on those state and local indicators that we showed you, but also being empowered learners, also feeling that what they're learning in class matters and makes a difference and that they can take their learning and translate that to impact on the real world. A few ways in which we do that, that our signature programs in LBUSD are of course through our AER program as well as our FLOW program. You can see that this is something unique to Laguna Beach, but it's so meaningful for our students because they're able to really engage and learning in a different way and collaborate with different community members and mentors. And for many of them, these experiences lead to a future career pathway because this is where they're really developing and cultivating their interests and doing a deep dive in topics that matter to them and coming up with solutions to real world problems. And especially with FLOW, when we talk about the environmental impacts that our students are facing in today's world, it's essential that they engage with cross curricular activities such as FLOW. You've heard us speak this year about our unit design. To date, we have had over 100 teachers participate in reimagining units of study. We hope next year to have over 70% of our stu- of our teachers redesign one or more units. So we are seeing evidence of of this in our classroom now. Teachers are taking the core units and they are building an inquiry based learning. They are building in projects and self reflection and competency based assessments. And in many of these instances, students are actually able to co-design the learning experience. So it's something that is highly engaging and empowering. As you're aware, our environmental literacy has been a huge focus this year and it ties to our district sustainability focus. And we are really excited in the first year to have been able to implement all of these different aspects to environmental literacy and look forward to continuing to expand and grow this in our second year and beyond. And I love what Ms. Harwood says when she says that our schools are really laboratories of learning. And it's true, you see students out there, they're in the garden, they're doing experiments and projects. And again, they're really understanding their job as environmental stewards. MTSS continues to really be the cornerstone of the work that we do in instruction because it is about meeting every single student where they are and identifying their strengths and their areas of need and then layering on individualized and personalized supports, creating plans and setting goals to help every single student grow and to thrive. We know that all students do not need the same thing. So this is really where that personalization and customization comes in. And we have such dedicated teams across all of our schools who spend a lot of time really looking at the whole child, encompassing all of the elements that you see here and designing plans and systems to help them to thrive. We're so grateful to have partnered with the Boys and Girls Club to continue our Expanded Learning Opportunities Program. Currently, we have 72 students enrolled in the program and those students are getting ready to receive a full summer of free camp, full day at the Boys and Girls Club where they will be able to go on field trips and engage in interest based clubs, make meaningful social connections and really form relationships with trusted adults in the community as well as their peers. So that's very exciting to be in our second year of this program. And of course, you're familiar with our other Expanded Learning Program lead. And we are so grateful to the board for your support of this program. This is last year's data, but to give you an update, we do currently have approximately 500 current kindergarten through seventh graders who will be joining us at Thurston for 130 unique courses. So we're going to have a busy and exciting summer and you're more than welcome to stop by and we will take you on a tour so you can check out some of those classes. Another exciting upcoming activity for us is the launch of our Laguna Beach preschool coming in fall 2024. Dr. Johnson has been working hard on this and I believe she has enrolled 30 students in the preschool. Our transitional kindergarten continues to expand as the age gap expands there. Soon we will be at Universal TK. And what a great way to bring our youngest community members into the fold, welcome them to our schools and get them acclimated so they can really be part of the culture of the school from a young age. It's really exciting time in early education in Laguna Beach. And that concludes Goal One at a glance. And I would be happy to take any questions that you have related to any of the content we talked about.
Anyone with a question, go ahead. Yes.
I always have questions. So just one quick question. I think that the FLOW program is one of the really most innovative and interesting things that we do. You know, there's lots of things we do, I don't know all about them, but that that one's a really great one. I know we've talked about this before, but how many students are involved and how do students get into that program? Like, what is the criteria or?
In the FLOW program? And jump in and correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe it's school wide and it's cross curricular. So the teachers across different domains, whether it's English or science, they plan together and they come up with common themes. And so the students will actually deep dive those themes, whether it's through literature or projects. And do you want you guys want to jump in and kind of share a little bit more?
Something related to the environment. So for AP English literature this year, we read a bunch of, we read a series of poems by Mary Oliver relating to the environment. And then we made a short film about it. So every English class, I mean, ever since I was in ninth grade, we had Smoke Jumper in ninth grade. You do something related to the environment. So you know, based off what your theme is, so my freshman year was fire and it's land, ocean and water. So it's something related to that and you pursue it in your English class and you'd usually develop some sort of project about it. It's like in freshman year, you, you know, you interview someone who survived the 1993 fire in Laguna Beach. And then you write an article about it and the environmental impacts it has. And it's an impact today and that all it's all a part of the English class.
Thanks. So there are no kids that are not involved in the FLOW program?
Correct. And they bring in really amazing guest speakers and they have assemblies and all of the students also participate in those.
Right. Also, I'd like to add on to that a little bit. You know, I'm in the art department and art department chair. And in my classroom, whatever book they've read, then they redesign and reimagine the cover of the book and redo that and learn how to get it set to print. And there's also a FLOW club where kids will meet during tutorials, after school, do beach cleanups and some things like that.
I I love the FLOW program too. I really liked the student experience part of this. I think that's fantastic that 76% of students report participating in challenging learning activities. Now, could they, does that mean that most of the time they feel their activities are challenging or relevant? Or how is it asked? Could it be that one time they had a challenging activity? How is this question worded?
We had a few different iterations of that question. So one of them is they're asked to agree. It's and it's on a Likert scale, so strongly agree all the way down to strongly disagree. And so students are able, they're asked, do you participate in challenging learning activities? So however, there's another one that breaks it down by individual subject area or domain. And it's on a scale of, you know, all of the time, most of the time, never. And so it's, it really mirrors that figure that you see there. I mean, certain subject areas skew a little bit stronger because not everybody participates. For example, in high school, not everyone takes music. So they might rate music a little bit lower just because they're not into music or a musician taking those courses. But what we saw was that regardless of which way that question was asked, it came out to be pretty close to that statistic there.
Well, those are terrific results. Thank you.
Yeah.
Dr. Canenberg, thank you for a very comprehensive report. I'm actually looking at the LCAP plan, 133 pages of it in its glory. This is a high level question though. When you for Goal One, our our CASP, ELA and math scores, when we look at our targets in the third out year, how do you set those targets? For example, like, you know, outcome for one one where we want our CASP ELA scores to go from 78.96 to 85%. Those are some pretty meaningful changes, especially when we're thinking about our LCAP goals in the the categories that are struggling, like trying to take our EL learners from 26% to 45% meeting the standards. Those numbers kind of jump off the page. So I wanted you to speak to, how do you come up with those targets? And then if we don't have intermediate targets, which is fine, your one, your two columns are blank. You know, how do we track our progress to them? And have we historically been good, like with our property tax, you know, assessment forecasts? Have we been good at monitoring those? Because that would be really encouraging to see that type of growth in our students.
Absolutely. So since this is our three year plan, we are aiming high and we strongly believe that we can make incremental growth along the way. We believe that all students are capable of achieving at high levels and we have the systems and supports built into place to hopefully make that become a reality for our students. And when we set those targets, you know, we felt like we wanted to aim high and because we believe in the work and we believe in our students and our staff. And so it may seem lofty, however, we're Laguna Beach and we have high expectations. So we will work very hard to get to that target. It is, it is ambitious, but we will have those checkpoints along the way, as you saw each each year with our CASP. And of course, iReady three times a year, so that's a really good indicator. So we just keep our eye on continuous improvement and growth in all areas.
I'm always impressed with your work. That report is just excellent. I'm just wondering about, I can understand how you how you interact the English learners, immigrant students and students with disabilities. interact the English learners, immigrant students, and students with disability. Tell me how you're doing the economically disadvantaged.
Right. So that particular group is not, it is confidential information at the school site, so they're not identified as, these are your students who are socio-economically disadvantaged or from economically disadvantaged homes. However, we take a look at making sure that we have some extra layers of support for that particular group of students. Of course, our intervention programs are identified by student data. So if students are in that group and are not performing at grade level, they're automatically going to get some extra supports. And in Goal Three, we'll dive into that a little bit more with the outreach that happens through our Family Resource Center and parent engagement, because there are also some specialized services for those students and their families. And our English learner group is a small group. So that's the tricky thing when we're looking at setting the bar for them. We only have about sixty students identified as English learners, so bringing a few students up to proficient does make a big jump. For our students who are English learners, we have extra support personnel at our school campuses. We have instructional assistants who specialize in that area. We have an English language development instructional coach, and she and I together run a lot of professional development sessions for our teachers to really build capacity in that area because it is a specialized skill set to focus on language acquisition in tandem with working towards competency in the state standard. So we're always talking through strategies and what is most effective in helping students to grow, first of all, but also relate to the material, see multilingualism as a true asset, and to capitalize on that and really enhance the inclusive classroom communities that we have by allowing students who are multilingual to really shine in that role.
Okay, I forgot to tell you, thanks for the great report. You always do great reports. I really appreciate it. My question goes back to Dee's question. Do you have a way, when you look at student surveys, of mapping the responses onto either age or student performance? So for example, I really like seeing that thirteen percent of the students were neutral, but that still leaves a chunk of students who don't find work challenging. Is that predominantly, this is fifth grade through twelfth. So is it predominantly younger kids, older kids? Do we know anything about the grades? So you have some idea whether the students are students who are doing really well or just typically disengaged?
Every single school gets the same iteration of the survey, except that it's just their data. So you'll really see that reflected in each of our school student plans for achievement. And so it tends to be the younger kids, the fifth graders, tend to be overwhelmingly positive in all areas. And then as the students get older, they do tend to skew a little bit more of that neutral or not as high ranking of their experiences. So part of that could just be the maturity that comes with that or the lens in which they're looking through. But Dr. Allman and his team, and of course, Mr. Verlone and his team, and Dr. Hatchell, everybody disaggregates their own data so that when they're developing their psych goals, they have that statistic just for their student population, and then they can design actions and services and programs around them.
Great, because it also goes back to the conversation we had earlier about doing a study of whether or not we were serving gate students, whether that program made sense. And so I think that those things could possibly be linked. I also really appreciate the data about students who are moving up into Tier One from Tier Two. So thank you for that disaggregated data.
Absolutely.
I was looking at the indicators and metrics for success. And when we're looking for indicators that LBUSD prepares students with the skills that are needed for college, and they're not in college, they're just guessing. I mean, how do they know if they have the skills or not? And we've talked before about surveying students maybe the first year out after graduation. And I know there's groups that do this, we've talked about, but it seems like that would be more valuable when they're actually in college, to see if they're prepared than just guessing. Do we have any plans to maybe survey students after they've graduated on how well they look back and think they were prepared?
And I'll let Dr. Mayberry speak to that in a moment, but I wanted to say those indicators are set by the state of California. So all of the public school districts are looking at those as the success metrics around the area of college and career readiness. And that's what you saw on the dashboard under the College Career Indicator Band, where our students came out as highly prepared. However, I know there is, are some upcoming presentations that involve alumni, so I'll let you speak to that.
I wanted to respond first. My experience has been that once the alums leave us, it's really hard to survey them. And the numbers that we get back, they do not tell us a lot. And so that's, and I'm talking about basically college students who left, and I wanted to find out, was the education worth it? Was it worth forty thousand a year for four years, the jobs and whatnot? Very few will tell me.
To a group at one of the conferences that does that. And they, I mean, they said the same thing, but they said they got over fifty percent.
Yeah, so we have, so as Dr. Kanberg said, like, those indicators, right? Like, they're all, at the state level, those are all based off of research from looking at large data sets of like students that have this level of, you know, eligible for UCA through G courses. In those colleges, they're more likely to be ready for college. Students with these, with these GPA, students who take these AP courses, students who have, who are multilingual, like, you know, the state syllabi literacy. So there's all these indicators that tell us that they're likely to be successful in college, right? And there's other ones too, like, for some students, just visiting a campus is a strong indicator that they're going to go to college. So we look at all those research, and obviously, they go on beyond, right? And so, so getting, following up with those students. We've done the pass-through focus groups. We do some different surveys. We survey a lot of our CTE students after they leave. We do actually have a research project that we're doing, Learns in our Collaborative, that we started at the end of the fall around looking at our students and their, looking back on their experience as well as some of our alumni as well. So, but as Kelly had said, like, it is hard to capture, you don't get a lot of return. But we, but we do at times try to reach out when we can. Probably not something we'll do necessarily every year, but every few years. We think it's a really important piece to try to capture anybody who's back in town, anybody who's willing to respond. We collect, we do, the high school counselors collect their personal emails on their, like, as their exit survey at the end of their senior year. So we try to connect to them that way, but it's a fairly, we've looked at actually different companies to do it as well. It's fairly costly because it's very laborious, right? But we'll have a report that the Learns in our Collaborative, they kind of wrap that research up the spring. And so we're going to share that with the board, actually, in the coming weeks with you. And then they're, they weren't available to come to a board meeting in the spring to share it. We'll share the report with you that has some of our alumni feedback, but they're going to come to a board meeting at the start of the school year when they're available to come down from the person who did the research. The main researcher was, was up in Seattle, so he's going to come down in either August or September for a board meeting.
That would be great. I did some informal surveys of my own a few years ago. We had a number of students that went off to college and came back after one semester. And some made it through the year, but then didn't want to go back. And in just talking with them and their parents, a lot of it wasn't so much academic. It was, they weren't mature socially enough, and so, I don't know. But that's another way to look at it, how many, how many kids come back soon?
President Vickers, did you want to ask any questions? Because we're at, okay, you're so kind. Dr. Kanberg, I had a question about the success indicators, just some ideas for additional things to consider. So on Action 1.8 on the Early Learning Program, I was interested to see if we might, either in this LCAP or in next year's even, because we do them every year, consider our EDI data as a success indicator, especially with the large investment in the preschool program. And then additionally, Action 1.10 on Environmental and Sustainability Education. I like that we included, this is page fifty-two of a hundred and thirty-three, but I like that we included the CASP Science Scores as one indicator. And I'd be curious, because this is something unique that we're heavily investing in in our district, if we have other success indicators, maybe we need an LCAP question about that. You know, we have a lot of, in Goal Two, which we get to, we have a lot of very specific LCAP questions which help drive our work. But I wasn't finding as robust set of success indicators in those two goals. So that was page fifty and fifty-two, and there's no response needed. They're just things to think about.
And that's certainly something, we revisit our LCAP survey every year. So we take a look at kind of what the top priorities are and making sure when we review every year that we've captured everything accurately. So there's definitely opportunity to revisit and do additions. And of course, student focus groups are always a great opportunity to build in questions regarding our priority areas and also perhaps any new initiatives or evolving, expanding programs. So with the environmental literacy being brand-new in its infancy right now, I look forward to seeing that growing and getting that feedback from our students. I agree, I think that would be really important. And I think we definitely have some different avenues by which we could collect that feedback.
Data that's year-over-year. I know we did an ad hoc survey, I think, that went out after the LCAP, if I'm not mistaken, on environmental sustainability and what the student experience and parent perspectives are. But if we can make sure that those questions have fidelity and that they're, you know, either one or two of them are answered year after year, then we look at three-year-out goals, we might have better data to make decisions based on. Thank you very much.
Absolutely.
Any other questions?
I just had one brief question I wanted to make on this page. So you have the percentages over here for the identified groups. Those students are also in the total, correct? And then just disaggregate that data. And, okay, so the representative is, these students would be represented more in these other groups.
Yes, it's the whole, and then it's broken down.
And then back on this slide, I think, I know in something I referenced, I asked this before, that those students, those percentages, they can be one student up here in multiple categories.
Absolutely, yes.
So the total number of students then could be even smaller, correct?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah.
So go ahead with Goal Two.
Okay, we'll turn it over to Dr. Keller, who is going to talk about Goal Two.
Thank you, Dr. Kanberg. Hello, Board of Education. Thank you so much for your time tonight. I'm going to be sharing our information about Goal Two. And just like with our Goal One metric, we look at a variety of different ways to measure our student success in this, in this area. So obviously, the community survey is a critical element, captures student sentiment perspectives, parent and staff perspectives as well. We'll be looking at student suspension and expulsion data, not only to try to continue to emphasize and support high-quality prevention services for students, but it really can be an indicator for the school climate that we have as well. And then our student focus groups will be a really important piece to learn about the student perspective on what they find important in their learning experiences. And then lastly, that average daily attendance, it really is the, one of the most important signals for us in terms of the, of the engaging learning environments that we have for students. And we want to continuously refine and adapt our systems of care to make sure that students are in school to the greatest extent possible. Now, Goal Two focuses on social-emotional competencies and self-identity through student agency, engagement, resiliency, and positive relationships. So that's our ride for the next few minutes. All right, so the first piece of important data, one of the most robust sets of longitudinal research is a study called The Shoulder of the Garden Isle, which talks about the importance of having one positive adult relationship in a student's life. And this metric, we capture every year in our annual survey, and eighty-four percent of our students are reporting that they have at least one adult at school who supports them. And we would like that to be a hundred percent, obviously. And you have another, you have ten percent of students that are ambivalent about that, that question. Of the students that, that say that they don't have a staff member at school that supports them, seventy-nine percent of students indicate that they have somebody outside of school that supports them. Actually, when we, when we really unpacked the data, we found that there's six students of all one thousand two hundred-plus students that took the survey that indicated they do not have an adult at, in the school setting or outside of school that supports them. We want to know who they are. I mean, we want to, we want to make sure that we're, we're there in supporting and providing care for kids because we know that, that, the reason why that one adult relationship is so important is because it helps build resiliency in young people. And exactly what Mabry Perry was talking about, life after high school, you have to be resilient, the ups and downs that you're going to face in life. Now, comparatively, the California Healthy Kids Surveys in Orange County surveys twenty-three thousand students in the most recent two-year, two-year block of surveying. Only sixty-four percent, not only, it's still above fifty percent, but sixty-four percent of students are indicating that they have at least one adult at school who cares about them or notices when they're not there or listens, listens to the student when they have something to say. Now, that's not the exact same metric, but it really, it's a good proxy for what we're talking about when they have one caring, supporting relationship. And clearly, our data is really impressive in this area. We want to continue to amplify that in future years. Additionally, we have worked really hard to improve our systems of care around social-emotional support. We have, you know, through the board's investment and through revisionary leadership from our superintendent, we've really built a system where we have a high-quality school counseling services that real, that are incredible across the district. We have nine direct school counselors providing services to students. We have four school social workers who are providing services to students or student support specialists. We right now have a team of five school psychologists providing services. These are all experts in the area of supporting student mental health and social-emotional wellness. The ability to be able to provide prevention services and Tier One supports out in, in the school, in classroom environments is incredible. And it really helps us to make sure that, that, that the destigmatization efforts around mental health, students know that there are people on campus that are readily available to provide services when in need. Now, I will just speak just generally again about the ratios because I'm so appreciative to work in such a supportive environment. But the, the target rate for school counselor to, to student ratio is one school counselor for two hundred and fifty students. Our district ratio is one for two hundred and sixty-four students, a K-12. However, the middle school and high school have ratios that are below that recommended average. And with the addition of our social workers and our school psychologists, we by far exceed those rates. The social worker rate by, in California, is six, over six thousand students to one social worker K-12, which is unbelievable to me. So, you know, I appreciate the board's continued support in that effort. We want to continue to refine not only the human capital that serves our students, but also the systems of care that we provide our students. And then I want to highlight another student perception metric. The eighty-five percent of students are indicating that they have a positive learning environment for all students. And another eleven percent of students are really ambivalent in this area in terms of not, not indicating a positive or negative feeling in either way. Obviously, a positive learning environment, we believe that that's the foundation of academic success. If you don't feel safe and connected and like you belong in, in your classroom, you are not going to be ready to learn. And so our teachers and staff, I just so admire the colleagues that I work with on the front lines every day working with students. They create those environments that are warm and welcoming and inclusive and really help support students to feel like that they, that they can take risks, they can, they can be, bring themselves into the classroom, and that they can maximize their academic achievement. On the qualitative side, want to highlight one of the focus group questions for elementary, middle, and high school, which was asked, like, what, what, what do students want us to know that is most valuable to them in their learning experiences? So I think similarly to what Dr. Kanberg had shared, you're going to see some things around being able to do collaborative work, being able to do more, present your knowledge in different ways. And I'll show you, that was the elementary, this is the middle school. Project-based learning comes up over and over again, the interdisciplinary, interdisciplinary studies, being able to solve real-world problems, that authentic experience. Here's some information at the high school, you heard about AER previously, I think that's one of the, and Flow, both of those are really signature programs that, that highlight some of these really cool ways that students are able to demonstrate their learning. Also, students are able to become digital storytellers using technology tools, whether creating videos or slide decks, or, I mean, so many things that are, that are highly valued in the, in the world of work. And then I had mentioned previously how important the attendance metric is. Not only, I mean, school attendance matters for students. We know that students, number one, are, the least amount of violent incidents happen to students when they're in school. So I just want to clearly state that, that is a fact, that has been in existence for a long time. And so we know that students not only are safe here, but we also, we think that they benefit from what we do. And so we want them to be prepared for a successful life after high school. And what, and the middle metric there is our, is our chronic absenteeism rate. We're, we're trying to ensure that the most vulnerable students, we had over eighteen percent of our students were chronically absent two years ago. And now that rate has significantly improved. And now, a little over eight percent into our, as of April of this year, are considered chronically absent. That is an incredibly diligent effort from all of our school sites under Dr. Kanberg's leadership. to have teachers and administrators and select support staff work directly with students with responsive services, providing really effective attendance plans for students, ensuring that they're supported in resolving any issues that might be barriers to positive school attendance. And then using a progressive support mechanism to be able to provide more and more involved supports if the, if that attendance issues continue. Additionally, our, our suspension rate continues to remain low relative to other school districts. Suspension is a last resort for us and we always look at suspension as really almost a failure for us because we want students to be in school. Sometimes we're mandated to send students based on the education code or individual circumstances may really warrant that, that outcome. We use a variety of other prevention activities. I'll talk about PBIS in a second to try to set behavioral expectations school-wide. We want to make sure that we're also using in disciplinary situations, counseling for students. We want to use alternatives to suspension, restorative practices whenever possible. I'll discuss that a little bit more in a minute. And then as far as our, looking forward to our actions, we're going to continue to focus on these areas of supporting social emotional support, whether that's explicit social emotional learning programs at the elementary level. It's this robust school-based mental health services that, that our qualified staff can provide and our, and our partner agencies, we've, we've developed, we've developed another tier of services with telehealth services now and with linking students to outside agencies that are local partners. We want to continue the professional development and other areas to help enhance those positive teacher-student relationships and so much more. The MTSS is the, really the backbone of our philosophy of how we address student issues. Tier one, focus on prevention. Tier three, the most intensive services, we're focused on individualized services to diagnose the individual student issues and provide the right intervention to the right student at the right time. Our counseling supports, again, are incredible and robust and our counseling team are just energetic, go-getter people that want to, want to solve the world's problems, which I love. There's a variety of different programs that they lead from the PALS program at, at various levels. We provide parenting workshops for families, social emotional learning lessons. And again, that tier one support is really important for that initial problem solving, that prevention work. And then if needed, they provide additional supports and services. Well, you've heard the term ramp before, recognize academic, I'm sorry, recognize American School Counselor Association Model Program. And we just went to Carter, Carter and Chase were with us today in an advisory council meeting at Lincoln Beach High School. We had an opportunity to listen to the high school group's counseling team plan on, on their emphasis on focusing on providing in-person, individualized counseling services to students as an emphasis of the time that they spend during the school day. So they want to spend 80% of their time focusing on direct student services and really manage all the systems of care. So only 20% of their time are focused on these other areas. And ultimately, and, and it's a multi-year process to collect data, to build an advisory team, to, to hit all these metrics. But by 2025, 26 is the goal for ramp certification, both at the middle school and high school. And our elementary sites both are onboard two and out years. It's a very heavy lift on, on the process, but we look forward to sharing that back with you later. This year, we've launched our well space, wellness space at the high school. It's called the Wave. Megan Humphries, our student sports specialist is, is our leader in that, in that space. But really, it's a, it's another opportunity, a hub for student resource, resources to be able to provide healthy coping strategies, whether it's individualized or in group services. And the students can come in and get centered, get back, go back to class. We're just trying to teach this, the habits of mental health so young people can recognize when they're having distress and be able to incorporate personalized strategies to be able to get back to baseline and back in the class and be ready to learn. And, and elementary and middle school use positive behavior intervention supports as our framework for, for reducing interfering or problem behaviors in school. That's setting school-wide behavioral expectations around expected behaviors, incentivizing, reinforcing positive and expected behaviors through a variety of different means, from positive reinforcement to token systems, et cetera. And then collecting data for student, student, around student behavior and then being able to have a system of intervention to be able to meet with the student where they're at if they're having a behavioral issue. And resorted practice is one of the elements that we've trained all of our elementary teachers, a vast majority of our middle school teachers in. It's just another tool set in a teacher's tool bag to be able to work in a, in a constructive way with young people using an evidence-based approach, to be able to set classroom norms, set behavioral expectations, help support social conflict and social problem solving. And on the discipline side, and, and when an administrator is working with these types of strategies or tools, they're able to potentially think about how a student might be able to repair or restore the relationship in a behavioral transgression. So really important continued work in this area. And I think it's, it's an element along that continuum of, of alternatives to suspension. Lastly, I want to highlight a model of, of how, how we've been so successful with improving our attendance rates. This is Thurston's attendance chart model. And so the months started up the upper left-hand corner and go around counterclockwise. Well, not really counterclockwise and more of a column. Yeah, okay. Well, I'm going to highlight November here, which is the third one down on the left, which basically there's thresholds of implemented intervention here. So there's tardies and attend absences. When a student at a particular moment in time, it meets the threshold or exceeds a threshold, there's a team of professionals led by, led by one of our teachers who's, who's directly doing this work, but in working in collaboration with the administration to directly work with a student, contact the family, follow up with counseling supports, bringing a team of people together to be able to identify the problem, set a goal and try to, try to improve the student's attendance. It's a real true problem-solving model and it's been very effective at the middle school level. There's progressive intervention levels from a school attendance review team process, which would be a team, a team problem solving at the school level. And then if that's not effective, more involved interventions at the district level at the district attendance review team meeting. That is goal two in a nutshell. So I'm open to questions.
Time for your questions.
I just want to thank you, Mike. The, it's so impressive since I came on the board as far as how far this area has grown and the supports that we have available throughout the district. And so I know it's your leadership, but I, I just wanted to, since I also represent this board, that community, community connections, is that what it's, yeah. Yes. Drug and alcohol. I noticed that you didn't talk anything about that and you know how much it will be hurt.
I, you're right. So drug and alcohol prevention is an absolutely critical element of the work that we do. And so, and that's actually elementary all the way up. So social emotional learning and social problem solving and trying to not, and make healthy independent choices, know yourself and be able to interact with other people, that's really important in the work that we do, elementary, middle, and high school. And then explicit instruction at the middle school and high school level, really important for reducing rates of alcohol and drug, drug use. And obviously, there's other important clubs and interventions that try to teach healthy coping strategies and how to, how to get help in the event that you need support and assistance. So I agree. It's, it's a really important element of our instruction.
Appreciate it that we met with the students' club.
That's right.
Last week, I guess it was and.
The Strength in Numbers Club, yes.
It was great.
Thank you. Yeah, the Strength in Numbers Club's really impressive and they were out today at the mental health walk, also showcasing some important work that they're doing around social norming, around making healthy choices. I mean, they're really an important element of that alternative to alcohol and drug use. Yeah, thank you.
So will substance abuse prevention be put in as one of the key actions? I mean, just in the last couple of weeks, I've gotten quite a few calls and talked to kids in my neighborhood about vaping. And, you know, what I hear, truly not be true, is nothing's being done about it. So then that looks like we just are accepting it like when you don't do anything about it, it kind of looks like.
Well, I want to just.
And I don't really think that's the message we want to send.
Well, it's not the message I want to send because it's not true. So, uh, yeah, so what we do about it is on the, on the prevention side, we teach students about the harms of vaping and using drugs and alcohol so that there's explicit direct instruction that happens around that. And obviously, like, parents are a really important element of this too. So we want to equip parents and families with information about how to have conversations with kids. I think the modeling that happens at home is really important as well and the limit setting that happens there. Obviously, that's out of the purview of what we control. So we can give parents information about that and I think you'd agree with that. And also, I think a really important piece is the discipline side. So when, when there's a, when there's a, we have a board policy and an administrative regulation around how we address alcohol and drug infractions on campus. And, and I think you're going to see in the future that actually you're going to not be able to suspend students and we wouldn't, we're interested necessarily in suspending students unless we're required to regarding these issues. We want to make sure that students are equipped with the knowledge and information about why it's a problem and given some really high-quality intervention supports and offer those services, which we already do, for students that are involved with alcohol, drugs, vaping, any of those issues that might be on campus.
I agree. I wouldn't want the students suspended. But what parents have said to me is they would at least like the parents notified of the students that are doing this and maybe a parent-student group.
Any student that would be involved with a discipline-related issue would be, the parent would be notified. So I just want to clarify that.
I, I just wanted to thank you or Dr. Allman, whoever came up with the little course that the students had to take before the prom, the 400 and 4. That was just excellent.
I agree. Yeah, I think that, uh, we were just talking about that this week in our meeting with the school resource officers. So a lot of really important multi-team effort in working directly with students. Carter, do you have a comment about it or?
I can, I can speak to it a little bit. Yeah, for like three weeks before prom, Mr. Carlson, the vice principal, those tutorials in the library where you would go, you would sign up for the tutorial and they would very explicitly and clearly go over the expectations of, you know, what was expected at prom, you know, you know, drugs and alcohol would not be permitted. I want to say, you know, attending, it was the most sober high school event, I think, that we've had in our history. I think all of my friends would attest to that as well. And so I think the intervention, you know, the tutorial intervention really worked well. It was, yeah, very sober event, most, most in the history, I think.
And, and the party bus, the party bus count was zero, I believe. So I think that was the big win there too, right?
Was it required? You go to this tutorial to get your ticket for the?
Yes, it was mandatory to attend a tutorial in order to purchase a ticket from ASB. So you had, you couldn't not go to the tutorial if you wanted to go to prom. You had to go to one of the tutorials, so.
I think that's a good example of a, that's a really good example of, you know, there was a problem. And I think that, you know, Dr. Allman and the team were very responsive, which is being thoughtful, proactive, appreciate the student, student experience that, that, you know, they responded to, actually families, parents, and students responded extremely positively to that, to that information.
It's Dr. Allman's good social work training.
It is, it is. He's got a social work background. That's right.
Mayor Perry, too. I did want to note that there is a lot of drug and alcohol, substance abuse data in the LCAP. So even though Dr. Keller didn't mention it, like action 2.4, 2.2 comes up over and over again. So it might not have been a highlight and condensing 133 to 10 for us, but.
Yeah, and we, we measure it every two years. So it's a little bit more challenging. I mean, the most reliable and valid assessment is the California Healthy Kids Survey. So we do that every two years. We can use that data. I think it definitely informs how we think about prevention activities and, and intervention activities. And so I think it's, it's, we incorporate that information. And just because of the nature of giving it every two years, it doesn't necessarily meet in, meet well into the year-over-year measurement incremental growth, growth model.
So great report. Thank you. You're also doing just fantastic work. And I don't really have questions about what you're specifically doing now because your job is just, you know, sort of spot students who are troubled in various ways and try to address it. My question is whether there's more that the board or the schools can be doing around the sort of social emotional problems that result from technology and social media.
Yeah.
And, um, you know, from, from my experience as a parent, a lot of what comes up in terms of student behaviors, even around bullying, um, you know, just what I hear, not, not the experiences of my own kid, but talking to their parents and stuff, comes from the problems of, you know, the over, the, the use of technology, iPhones, social media at very young ages. And I just wonder if the board or the schools should be doing more. I mean, we have great programs to give information out to parents, but I wonder if we should be more proactive about helping parents to make decisions. I mean, a lot of us talk amongst ourselves around the wait till eight for a phone and, but you know, many kids are getting phones in elementary school and have access to social media and on iPads. I'm not trying to critique that, I, you know, because I don't want to sound judgy, but I just wonder what we should be doing.
Yeah. We're going to actually talk about that in August when we have our board workshop, because it's a topic for us. Obviously, we have the education code that calls out specifically right now what are the board's kind of limitations are related to law. That students are permitted to have a phone, but we can create right rules around that. But I think there is a, a movement afoot, especially with the data that's come out more recently around ways by which banning them is, is next to impossible. However, controlling it in some way, shape, or form is, is potentially possible. So we want to look at the board policy, have you weigh in as a board as to, with Mark there, with legal counsel there, so that we can say, you know, are there things the board wants to do proactively within your own jurisdiction that you can do that then we can then implement? So great question and that's, that's the intent. And I would go back to two. I, I didn't know about the question earlier. So remember, you asked a question previously and I just wanted to make sure for the record that I addressed it specific to kind of this, the college student question. So about students returning their second year. We have access to some of that through the National Clearinghouse data. And it's not a, a huge issue. I think class of 2022, we had 17 students return, 14 students returned, so 7%, 6%. Obviously, for a variety of reasons, that kids come back. But I think, you know, in aggregate, it's a pretty small number, all things considered. I think the bigger question or bigger frustration that many, many would have is how many finish their degree in four years, which is, you know, barely 60% or, and as a nationwide issue, which I know two of the folks on our board here have very intimate knowledge of. Yeah, yes. And, and then the other piece I'd say is, you know, we recognize that oftentimes there's lots of conversations around things that are happening at school. We try to ground it as much as we possibly can and like, what do we know data-wise? And so from whether it's, you know, vaping use, alcohol use, what are the different topics? We do gather that every two years, as Dr. Keller says. And so I can tell you from what we get from our seventh grade students reporting around vape use, it's very, 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 very limited, very small number of students. That has a direct correlation, and Dr. Keller and I have talked about this, to students' perceptions of harm. Right? And so if you recall, prior to COVID, there was starting to see a lot more media attention given to the impacts of vaping on lungs and different things like that. We, if you've noticed, I have, Dr. Keller and I were just talking about that. You haven't seen that as much lately on the news and as much, it's not getting nearly as much focus, partly because a lot of those things have come off the shelves, right? So there's this perception that, you know, now that they've been taken off. And our rates of use have actually gone down as a result of access, right? But it is something that I think as an, as an entire state, it's a, it's a really important thing for us to focus on because there's a whole education level that we need the public health side to pick up as well, that they used to be doing. And I'm not sure why they have not continued that. And it might just be because they look at the rates and say, oh, the rates are getting much better than they were previously. But I still think there's an opportunity there for the public health side of things because that's really what this is about too, is the long-term public health implications that our students are facing. So great questions and, and we appreciate them.
I also thought, since we are really putting emphasis and spending quite a bit of money to increase the offer, offerings in the arts, which supports social and emotional growth and competence and creativity and positive relationships. And it's big for attendance, all those things that we're working on. So that could actually be under, I think, one of our key actions that we're doing to support social.
Yeah, and I didn't, I, I neglected to mention, I apologize, but we, we have been, our team has been working really diligently with, in particular, even at the high school level. I'll give you that specific example. Our student sports specialist has been involved with going in and collaborating with the art teachers to do art projects that help students to focus on areas of mental health. There's been a very nice collaboration at, at other levels as well with our student sports specialists or school counselor teams to think about art as therapy. And so, or, I mean, I can't call it art therapy because that's trademarked, but, but art as healthy coping and, and art as ways to express themselves. I think that's a really important element.
Uh, Dr. Keller, I just wanted to make a commendation on the absentee data. That's, that's really strong growth. We, as a board, I think, have been asking you guys to try and improve that. And we've seen two years of, of improvement. That's not an easy area to improve. We saw the ADA go up. We saw the chronic absenteeism go down. And I think we have pretty good attendance to start with. So moving the needle that much two years in a row. And I think we have pretty good attendance to start with. So moving the needle that much two years in a row, really nice work.
I will say thank you on behalf of Dr. Canenberg, who leads this, these efforts. But I know it's a, it's a team-wide process and it really does take daily focus. So I appreciate everybody's efforts in doing that.
And to our student board reps, you have to let people know about those ditch days and they're just gonna, they'll just plummet our numbers right at the end. They have the data through April. We never get a end of year peak data, but we have it there. So that could be strategically placed.
Also had a quick question about the students experiencing homelessness and our services there. And I know that's private information, but I do know that we have had kids living in cars and kids living in a hotel part of the time and then in cars. And looking at what other districts have done, and I don't know what we're doing. But one thing that seemed to help in another district was even just buying a washer and dryer to have at school. So kids could have clean clothes, especially at the high school level. They don't want to come if they don't have clean clothes.
Yeah, I, I don't know our status on washer and dryers across the district, but I think that that, you know, we want to look at it like leave no stone unturned. That's anything that's in our scope and power to be able to impact or influence. I appreciate that, that offer and suggestion. I do know that we do many things through our family resource center and through our other support providers to provide supports for families. And we partner with obviously school powers and other local agencies to ensure that families are connected and supported. And families have been in really challenging and difficult times. And our focus always has been on student safety, getting the students to school, trying to reduce any barriers that they might have for coming to school and learning. So I appreciate that thought and comment.
When we provided free washers and dryers for residents of the dorm, we found that the other students who lived off campus were coming in and doing their laundry also. So I just want to give you some.
Context, our water bill. Good context.
Any other questions? Really pleased with this progress in this area. I, it's especially notable to me that PBIS and MTSS long history in the district and we just keep building on those programs and expanding it, I think, which is responsive to the increased need. And I think it's interesting that, that in response to maybe the mid-year event at the high school, then the tutorial comes and you see a whole different change, response and the way that you mentioned seeing a really sober prom. That one, one thing that came up before, we do health early on for our ninth graders. And I mean, years ago, there was discussion about, you can't fit everything in, but when our students are in twelfth grade, they're getting ready to go off, that we really need current information. I mean, you know, they could have that class again with things that had changed or, or increased as far as danger areas for them as they head off out to college, but there's really no time to fit it in.
Well, I think the tutorial has been a vehicle for where they're delivering some really interesting curriculum like that, so.
And then when we're looking at the attendance, because I know parents are really key to that.
Yes.
At least in my perspective.
Absolutely.
And particularly with younger children, because they need that support. So perhaps we have tutorials for parents also that we could offer. I mean, we can't, we can't require it because, you know, they're, just can't. But anyway, it's just an interesting approach. It sounds like it really worked and good student response. But I'm, I, I really see from things I continually hear and read, the increased anxiety levels among students. But again, it references back to parent modeling. Because some parents have had increased anxiety because of social media, internet, comparing themselves to everybody else in the world, which never used to be possible. And so there's a lot of pressure. And I think if we, you know, I'm sure we will be able to expand that to more family support. I mean, I just, I really appreciate the growth. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate your support. I'm turning it over to Dr. Mayberry, not Dr. Canenberg, Dr. Mayberry to review goal three.
Thank you.
Thank you. So we will go through goal three now here as we kind of wrap up this compartment before we hand it over to Mr. Dixon for the budget component. So this, this next goal, goal three is really about personalized learning and support systems that we have, as well as the conditions of learning that we set up for that. So some of the key metrics that we look at in here are around survey data, perceptions of safety, perceptions of belonging and engagement. We also look at different intervention assessment data for some specific student groups. How are they doing? We've seen some of this data with our IREDDI updates. And then lastly, one other big piece is our reclassification data. Some of our students who are being reclassified as multilingual as they are navigating the learning English and, and as well as their academics and being socially emotionally well. So those are kind of key components of goal three. Couple of key data points to highlight is one, like this one is around student parent perceptions, around our commitment to succeed. And you see very high numbers of eighty, eighty-five plus percent from students and parents. And believing in our, that commitment that we have for our students. Another one is around ninety percent of parents and guardians report that they're around school climate, around staff care about students. And so these are, we know that like when students feel safe and cared for, they're able to learn. When they don't, they're not able to learn. This is really foundational to the work that we do. Another piece in here that we were always looking at is what opportunities, and this is our student focus groups around this goal. What opportunities do students have helped them feel most connected on our campuses, right? And so similar to the other goals, we looked at different student focus groups at different levels. And you'll see a lot of these similar, like things that make them feel connected, different outdoor activities, team competitions, project-based learning, that authentic learning piece. You know, the high or middle school, right? We've expanded the sports program. There's different leadership opportunities. Those are all those really variety of things that students can do that connect to what they're most interested in or want to try out. Really help them with those campus connections. And similar at the high school, right? The high school has, I believe, almost maybe over fifty clubs now. Lots of lunch, it's rare to go over their lunch activity, lunchtime, but not see some kind of activity going on. Or kids out in the quad playing games. So it's just creating that climate where kids feel very connected is very obvious. They also, they also said talk about in different campus-wide special events that are going on, like the one we had today with flow, right? And so they're seniors. And so a lot of good activities that really make kids feel connected on campus resonated when we met with them in focus groups. We also look around diversity and equity. So eighty-one percent of our students report staff support that effectively. And so this is really important piece. This was a, this was something we looked at very closely, the board's guidance initiative. I believe now four years ago, we did an audit and really put a lot of energy in this area of like, how do we make students feel connected and inclusive? We have another great point to highlight and celebrate. It's eighty-seven percent of parents report that we, the district offers opportunities for families to participate. So opportunities to participate. Next one here talks about opportunities to get for input around district goals and action and actions. So that connection with families and giving, feeling like they're connected. I think this is important, especially highlighting knowing how busy people are, right? There's opportunities for that and sometimes people just aren't able to do it. And so they're feeling like they have this opportunities to give input and feedback and participate. And this is, has been a high priority for us, something for us to celebrate in this goal area around parent engagement and parent education. Again, some of these key actions that are, that come out of goal three. You'll see the safety programs, looking at some very specific student groups around special education. English learners, our homeless and foster youth, but also those conditions, the high quality conditions that we want. So that's facilities, that's our nutrition program, that's transportation services. All the different, our, our family resource center. So these different ways that we are building the conditions and the high quality programs that's, that help our families and students feel connected and safe. So that, a lot of that falls within goal three as we look at actions. Again, this just highlights all the different variety of things. I think you really comes out here. There's so many events going on here at the end of May and June. And you'll see it through kids with their clubs or their CTE courses or an AER symposium or the flow. So you really, really could see come out all the different variety of things kids do as they kind of, you know, wrapping up their year, their events and activities. Again, our ELD program where we have a very, very high classification rate with our team that works very personalized support for them. Similarly, for special education, we have talked before, it's really about providing that personalized individualized support to meet the students. Whether that's before school, after school, summer programs, with kids that maybe need additional scoops of support or more frequent support. We're always looking for a more flexible personalized way to make that happen. And then obviously, one of the more important things we've done here is really helping with the partnership with school power, as well as the support of the school board, is building out that family resource center and really getting that up and going. So there are opportunities for, for parents to connect outside school hours, during school hours, that's maybe off campus. This has been just a really big highlight as it's really come out and starting to be more active. I think looking at some of the recent data, this is not, this was from earlier this year, probably a month or two ago, but up, back in March, I think we had served over three hundred families at that point of the year. So just really finding different touchpoints for them to see it and get access to it. We actually asked a question on the survey point about awareness of it, which, you know, sometimes you start a new program, it just takes a while for people to know about it and know what's know what's available. And we had seventy-seven percent so that they were aware of it and it is available. So a really good job with the team to try to get that information out. And as we grow and add more activities, I think that'll only continue. This is a good example. We've done this the last couple of years around parent education. This is a parent project, a very big commitment by our parents to have these ongoing learning opportunities. We have staff that facilitate these and it's really one of our, it's a very, very good high marks from our parents that are participants in it, that not a lot of districts offer. So we're always excited to be offering that as well.
And the family resource center is a program of the school district.
Yes.
Because a lot of people believe it's school power.
Yes, as well. We've been, been very good partners, but it's our, we have our staff there that is providing, you know, direct services, making, making referrals when needed. And so it's definitely a district facility with the partnership of school power. So last thing, just about to leave, this is one of our favorite questions we ask kids. Where we shift over to the budget, the annual budget, what does success look like? And so you can just see a lot of, oops, let me go back here, skipped it. But I think we love looking at the responses to this question, right? Where kids making their definition of what is success, right? Like being happy, finding my passion. You know, this came out in different focus groups, kids repeated this as well, building connections, making any impact, right? Being independent. So the kids understand like these are such these important things for life, right? And the, the view that they take, it's always so rewarding to see them have this value system that we know will help them be successful. So definitely one of our favorite questions that we ask them in focus groups. So this is the last part for the LCAP and the goal area. Again, you can give feedback here as well as on our website. There's a link there if people want to give additional feedback beyond what we've provided, our opportunities these last several months. But that concludes the goal area before, and having answered any questions before we shift over to the annual budget.
Thanks for the report. I just have one question because I read the larger report. And when I look at three point one three, can you give me a little more information about what you think about and what you're, we might do about the fact that only sixty-eight percent of parents and guardians reported that they were extremely to somewhat satisfied with communication from their child's teachers? Because if you figure that that's three elements on a Likert scale, then it seems like less than fifty percent would consider themselves satisfied. The, the issue I have with it is like, I don't, I don't necessarily think that's a teacher problem as much as it might be a structural, cultural issue around parent engagement with that, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. I think this one is actually asking whether they agree or strongly agree. So it's similar to a Likert scale, but they, for that question. I mean, this is something we've been talking as a district for a while, like around communication, especially with, with Anna Karen and our communications plans. And so we've looked at different ways around, sometimes it's with some parents, it's been around the frequency of it, the ones that are not satisfied, right? It was like, we're getting too many communications. It's just too much, right? So then others, it's been, it's been around like how they're getting it or what the topics are to it. So we've gotten a variety of feedback, but I would, I definitely think it's a prior, it's definitely, it is definitely a priority for us to figure that out from, whether that's from the teachers, the school and the district, right? There's so many ways to communicate now that for a while, a couple of years ago, it felt like it was just too much. And it was coming from all different angles. So I know that that's a piece that we are continuing to look at.
I mean, there's the how we communicate, but it's also the kind of feedback that parents are able to get. So one question I would have is, do people at every level, including middle school and high school, feel like they're getting adequate feedback beyond just a grade that's posted about their child's performance in the classroom? And what are the structures for doing that? And are there other models? And I said this at the last board meeting, but I was really struck after we kind of talked about it at the board meeting. And then I looked at this percentage and wondered if we were doing a lot to.
Yeah, we, we look at that question, we look through the same lens of like, what do, what things do we want to offer parents and, and really push on? Whether that's like apparent conferences, right? And so things like that where we are doing those, really trying to get every parent to go to that. And then also giving them the space, the ones that are more engaged and, or some that are like, I don't, at this point, my kid's in high school and I want them to take ownership of it. I don't necessarily want the feedback. I want my student to have the feedback and grow. So we get different variations of what parents want to engage with.
My kids went to high schools where there were parent teacher conferences all the way through high school. Some parents didn't go, but it was like this opportunity to walk in and the teacher said, you know, your kid's struggling. And this is why I think it is in three minutes, but it like gave you a lot of information. So anyway, I don't, I don't know that that is a good model for here. I'm just suggesting that different districts do things different ways.
Yeah, I know. Thank you. It's an important, it's an important question to be looking at.
Yeah, thank you.
I think Dr. Boczewski, the three-year-out goal is a hundred percent satisfaction. So.
That's why I was hoping to hear more about. I saw that. Very impressive.
Yes, very impressive. And, you know, I do think it's a, there's shades of, of what parents want and need. And it does significantly changes as the student ages, but then the stakes are much higher. So, you know, and you have students that want more independence, but you have much higher stakes. So, you know.
Other questions?
I, I noticed that a lot of the success indicators are the surveys for grades five through twelve. And I am wondering how we find out about the younger students. I, I think that we need to give our younger students more credit. I think a lot of these questions they could answer about feeling safe at school and having an adult that they could go to. Having taught many years in younger grades. I mean, a lot of this is appropriate and for their parents.
Yeah, we look at different age levels based on surveys, right? And so even like our social emotional wellness survey, when they get to younger ages, just one, it's one-on-one conversations with kids. It's not a survey that they're doing based on their age. So, or it might be talking to a class or a different group. It takes, looks different versions based on the age group. I know as far as like a survey like this where you're doing it online, we typically, most districts at the lowest, I've heard them going down, it's into fourth grade. And then you would have more focus groups if you're looking at younger students and what they can provide and, and around their experience. But it is definitely age-based, you know, different, what are the different ways we can get that feedback is important.
Maybe we could look at some surveys that might be appropriate. I, I know in the past, we've given them a slowest second grade.
President, there's one last question, if I may. It's not related to any of these goals, but when we submit this to the county, do we get meaningful feedback? Because there's a lot of conversation at the state level on the, the burden of reporting, producing such report and a whole list of other reports. So I'm curious whether when this is submitted to Orange County Department of Education, do they share best practices from other districts? Do they give us some feedback? I mean, we've just given you guys lots of feedback. What's that like?
I will, having sat in the last probably five or six of the meetings, right? So it is usually less about content and more about, are we, are we getting things done that we, that were required to get done? When we submit it to them, which then it gets submitted to the state. It's usually less about the content. Now, that could be because of Dr. Canenberg's wonderful writing and storytelling and so, and data analysis. But I will say it is typically, they're looking at the, they're looking at the plan. There's a rubric that they go through that they feel like something should be in there. And sometimes we get, you know, as you can imagine, sometimes we get differing opinions depending on who we talk to. But their, or their experience of looking at LCAPs, because, you know, people adjust. So sometimes we get really interested, you know, really helpful feedback. And other times it feels like we're checking, we does feel like we're checking a box.
Compliance. Yeah. And, and to be candid, they shouldn't be giving us feedback. They weren't part of all of our feedback sessions, right? And so different communities are going to have different needs identified by the people that are part of that community. So, you know, I think that's part of it. So they, they're looking for compliance. It's a compliance check more than anything else. And oftentimes, you know, I've been through it, Chad, and we've all been through it before where one person says this. You take it back to the other person and they're like, oh, no, you don't need that. That's not what you need to do. It's bureaucracy. It is what it is. But for us, the value of going through this process is what really is the important part. We recognize what's the plan. It's a hundred and thirty-three pages long. This is supposed to be parent-friendly, by the way, just so you know. The design of this template, super friendly, right? This is supposed to be parent friendly, by the way, just so you know, the design of this template, super friendly, right? A hundred and thirty three pages, but. I think the way that we've synthesized it down to three goals, three actions, it's not all encompassing. It would be a thousand pages if it was everything we did. It's really highly targeted on closing those achievement gaps while and layering the supports, which I think you heard tonight. But there are other things we do, right? But I think it's important to note that. What we presented to you tonight was an, was not just staff sitting around thinking about how we can put this together. But the culmination of a lot of feedback loops. So. I appreciate, I know there's people in the audience that are part of that, all of obviously our staff, but also PT. I mean, we've had, we had a lot of feedback and kudos to the team for all the work they did.
This is an example of an unfunded mandate from the state and it shows that even a small district has to do all the stuff. That a large district has with lots and lots of staff. So it's just very impressive that we can have a hundred and thirty two page report. That covers all these areas and does such a great job.
Any other questions? I think your point is well taken, Dr. Mayberry, about in the communication. There was a point in time when we did callouts and we had people that would say, take me off the list. I don't want any more of those. And so I think to me, when I look at that kind of response. Actually, my mind goes even in the direction of maybe they didn't like what they heard. So it isn't satisfactory because they're, you know, they feel they're, they're not getting a fair representation or treatment of their child by that teacher. I mean, it can go in all directions. So when Kelly used the word shades, I mean, I think it's even more definitive than just shades. It's very. It's hard to disaggregate that response with all the variables. Because some people are, I mean, just like we would say, some children are more needy. I would say some parents actually are more needy with the amount of. You know, communication they want. When they don't, then maybe they don't focus in and think. If there's twenty five kids in that class, you know, I mean, and the teacher, I mean, it takes a lot of time.
We have a plan in place too, something that we've been talking about from trying to start the top. And kind of whittle it down. I think one of the bigger questions I have is what exactly is it that they want to know? And then that way they can determine if there's, if it's dissatisfaction because they're not getting that information, that's an easier thing to do. So we have some follow up things we want to definitely do around this topic. We have been working diligently on getting their feedback. That's one area that has an area of growth and that's one thing you don't see in the. In the presentation is where we started and where we've come, because I can tell you, we've come a long way around their involvement in plans. Because there wasn't a sense that they were involved and the principals have done a fantastic job, that's the team getting that involvement. So that is up. And now I think we asked that question around, you know, what's the level of feedback you're getting directly from the teacher? Now, now I think it is really, what is it that you're interested in learning more about from the teacher? I think it's more of a, of a secondary level because we, we do disaggregate it and look at the elementary level. And I think elementary teachers keep their people prize all the time. It's kind of a natural thing. It's the same kids. As the students age up, what is it that parents want to know? Because it's not the same thing that they want to know in elementary school. So I think that's the question we want to dig in on a little bit more. So we will be doing that this next year.
Thank you. Now we move to the budget section.
Okay, thank you. So the way this budget presentation is going to flow is going to be similar. And I know most of you have been in a joint fiscal management committee meeting. Is we're going to start looking at a larger view, looking primarily at the state's proposed budget via the May revision. And then we're going to work down towards our local factors and get into some of the revenue and expenditure data. There's a lot that goes into this budget. I mean, just for, for reference, there's probably close to eight thousand light items that go into building each one of these object codes. So it's, there's a lot of detail. So between now and June tenth, happy to take any feedback or questions that would help modify or alter what you see here tonight. But I really do hope to expand on some of the questions and highlight some of the changes and assumptions in particular of why the budget is being proposed as it is. I'll start with the end first. We are in strong financial position and we will continue to be based on our multi-year projections. So beginning with the governor's may revision proposal, it continues to follow the same theme that we kind of saw in January. Where the state's revenues are falling short, but the governors committed to protecting our current educational programs that have been expanded over the recent years. However, in order to protect the current educational programs, the may revision proposed expanded use of one time dollars that have been allocated, but not all spent. As well as requiring the complete depletion of the proposition ninety eight reserve. That's education protection account reserve. The January proposal only had assumed a partial withdrawal of those reserve funds. So it's significant and it does recognize the state continues to fall short as far as its revenue assumptions go. And the one thing I think is really important to note, when you look at those revenue assumptions the state has, it's based on the assumption there is no recession. In the future, at least in the next few years, and that the stock market continues to perform well. And that's significant because if neither, if one or neither of those comes to fruition, that just makes the state's budget problem even worse and something they're going to have to manage. The may revise includes the funding of a statutory cost of living adjustment or COLA, I'm going to start calling it, of one point oh seven percent. But even if this COLA is funded as proposed in the may revision, that's significant for districts because at the adopted budget, the COLA that was assumed in twenty four, twenty five was closer to four percent at three point nine four percent. So one point zero seven percent from a three point nine four percent is a real significant drop and it's going to be a problem for the local control funding formula districts. Especially because when you consider that cost of living adjustment, that doesn't cover the natural cost increases we see as a school district related to step and call movement. Consumer price index or the increased costs for goods and services. And then of course, a lot of the unknowns are increased placements for special education. So this is a problem. But as a community funded district, we do not receive LCFF dollars. So that one point zero percent COLA. Is really something that we only get for specialized programs or categoricals like special education. And in this case, even the universal meals provision. So the meal reimbursements that we get from the state. This slide provides some of the summary of some of the programs that do impact our district, which as I mentioned in the previous slide includes. Providing additional funding for supporting our universal meals program. But in addition, the proposal would alter the current process related to our extended learning opportunities program. And you heard about a lot of that in the LCAP presentation. Currently, the ELOP program is funding that's allocated to us on an annual basis of regardless of identifying need or desire for those funds. If the May proposal goes forward, it would require districts to submit their intent to have an extended learning opportunities program. And would require the approval of that intent and then proof that you actually spent the funds. Otherwise, the state would either not allocate or take back the funds associated with ELOP. For us, that amounts to about three hundred and fifty thousand dollars annually, just for the board's reference. Attendance recovery continues to be proposed, but in it's being delayed again to twenty five, twenty six fiscal year. And last, the funding for school facilities is eliminated and the funding for zero emission buses is also reduced. The elimination of the facilities dollars is intended to be backfilled via a statewide school facilities bond. So the governor's assumption is that we're taking out of the state's general fund allocation. And hopefully the statewide school bond gets passed and they can put in a lot of the programs and services in the bond that they had previously identified in the budget. And as far as the bus, zero emission buses, the program was proposed to be cut by about one billion dollars, but then that one billion be restored over the next two fiscal years. So originally it was one point five billion. Now it was dropped down to five hundred million with the one billion dollars being deferred out and repaid to districts over two years. But we'll see again, this is just a proposal. And as I mentioned, the state's budget problem is just continuing to grow and that's a very large chunk of money. Yeah, good question. So there is opportunities when you have charter programs or you could submit with your. Consulting or partnering agency for the buses, but there is components within the funding for what's really important for us is for the infrastructure to support electric buses. And that's, that would be on our property and that is infrastructure we would own. So certainly we would qualify for this money and that's why it's something that we're paying close attention to because even if we couldn't access the money. For the buses, if something were to come with the provisions of the grants available, we still can upgrade our infrastructure, which is really the most important part when you have an electric vehicle fleet. Because as you know, we want to expand our EV fleet to not just our buses, but all of our maintenance trucks, plumbing trucks and even our district vans. Okay. So now let's start looking at our local factors and what this is starting to mean. So the bulk of our assumptions that we have in this budget really is around us being community funded district. And what that means is, you know, all districts receive local property tax as part of their revenue stream. But when these local revenues exceed what the LCFF minimum guarantee would be, that's when you fall into our community funded status. And so only, only dollars received from the state, as I mentioned in a previous slide, are really related to the categorical programs and is very minor. But another thing I'd like to point out, and we've included this graphic in our budget book over the past few years, and I appreciate the board bringing this up as a question of, I believe it was maybe at least five years ago is. How much of our local property tax goes to the, our, our school district versus other city related and other services? And so that's what this graphic represents and it's basically showing twenty five cents of every dollar of property taxes what makes up the bulk of our, our local revenues for us. So as we rely primarily on local property taxes to support our educational programs, we pay very close attention to the real estate market. As a sale of homes provides a direct correlation to our growth or decline in revenue. As we look back at the home sale data in, in our district in two thousand twenty three. Which directly is impacting our projections for our two thousand twenty four, twenty five fiscal year. We saw twenty four point four percent reduction in the total number of homes sold versus two thousand and twenty two. That's pretty similar to the countywide data that you see on the slide, which the Orange County as a whole saw thirty percent decline in home sales. But what's more interesting is we also note that the median value of homes sold actually declined in two thousand twenty three versus two thousand twenty two by six point one seven percent. This, the twenty four point four percent and the six point one seven percent are specific to our district. So it's even outside the city. Bounds as part of, you know, the unincorporated parts of, but that's all of our data. And this next slide I'm going to show is going to be specific again to our district. So here on this slide, you can see our home sale data going back to two thousand and nine. But if you key in on the bottom two rows, you'll see that two thousand twenty two sale data is compared to the two thousand twenty three data. Illustrates both the reduction in the number of homes sold and the slight decline in the median value of those homes sold. When the information that's provided on this chart is provided to our property tax forecast, the result is about a two point five percent decrease in, in our property tax growth. So while it's still expected to increase, our local property tax revenue is projected to be about half of what we saw or experienced this year. Still growth, just half of what we're experiencing this year. Well, and with all that said, here is our latest property tax forecast that we received from our consultants at HDL for the next five years. I will say there's a lot more data that is shown here that goes into projecting that net taxable value row. That's shown on the table, but generally what we see is a slowing of growth, Dr. Kelly's point, growth nonetheless. All right, there's a lot of information on this slide. So let me start by orienting you first and then we'll get into what it means. So the blue and red bars reflect the revenue and expenditure forecast in each given year. Those amounts are tied to the scale you see on the left side of the chart. The green line you see running through the middle of the chart reflects the projected ending fund balance and is connected to the scale you see on the right side of the chart. So revenues and expenditures are tied to the data in millions on the left. And the ending fund balance green line is tied to the data in millions on the right. And that's why those figures are different. When we apply the property tax forecast to our multi-year projections for our budget, you can see that we maintain a very healthy fund balance. Which again is delineated by the green line running through the middle of the chart. But this slide also is a good demonstration of our projected cash flow needs related to our facilities program. As it shows and includes the transfer of the ten million dollars of general fund in two thousand twenty five, twenty six, which is where you see that real low dip in the green line there. To our capital improvement program to support the projects that we've identified in the facilities master plan. And I'll say, even though we see this significant drop in twenty five, twenty six, we still maintain during that year about three million dollars more in ending fund balance. Then what is required by both state and local board policies of our, what we need to maintain in our reserves, for reserves for economic uncertainties. And our routine restricted reserve maintenance account. Both of those add up to about that eight million dollars that we must maintain. So now we're going to take a look at general fund transfers because as we look at the last one where we saw the ten million dollar transfer happen in two thousand twenty five, twenty six, there are also some changes proposed in this budget related to other transfers. So next year we can expect in twenty four, twenty five, next year we can expect the status quo as far as what we've seen each year in terms of transfers to our capital improvement program and facility repair replacement program. And again, that's the one point two million to support the CIP, the nine hundred thousand to support the FER facility repair replacement program. However, we also included transfer to support our nutrition services program beginning next year and an ongoing amount of roughly, or of three hundred thousand dollars. I'll say this is lesser result of the implementation of universal meals. And it's, it's more in, in the fact that we stopped receiving a significant portion of one time money that we had previously got under the COVID relief fund to support our nutrition program. Including infrastructure, training and even. Purchase of local and organic produce. So all that one time money we're not receiving and hence why we are recommending and putting forward an ongoing transfer of three hundred thousand. And that's just so that. As we may, and that amount may change in future years. And obviously the budget's ongoing and we bring it back anytime there's changes to the board. But for this purpose, I would suggest this assumption provides a conservative contribution amount that we can support financially. While also minimizing any potential disruptions or lower quality related to our nutrition program. Other changes you see on this slide is a large contribution we anticipate to make in two thousand twenty five, twenty six to support our CIP. And then as well as a plan transfer to our special reserve or fund seventeen in two thousand twenty eight, twenty nine, and you see that at one million dollars. And basically that transfer helps us keep our special reserve in line with the same pace of growth as our general fund operating budget. So that we maintain our hundred percent community funded differential of reserves to operating budget. What this does not show, but there it is included in the budget is in two thousand twenty five, twenty six, there's also another five hundred thousand dollar transfer being proposed. To fund seventeen, but the reason it's not shown up here is because that is not proposed to come out of our general fund. Rather that would come out of the Aliso property reserve as those, that fund is. The amount required to maintain an Aliso property fund goes down every year in relation to the HUD loan. And as it goes down by twenty five, twenty six, when you look at the amortization schedule of the loan, there's a little over five hundred thousand dollars available. So rather than sweep that into general fund, we propose keeping it in another reserve, which we've done and you've done as a board and we really appreciate that because. Maintaining our reserve balances, as you know, is incredibly important. And this is one of the ways that we're able to do that. So I appreciate that and thank you. On this last slide for our local factors, I just want to highlight the latest information we have related to the pension cost that we see over the next five years. These are adjusted annually and they do tend to fluctuate slightly. And just as a reminder, the percentages you see for both the public employee, employees retirement system and the state teachers retirement system. Those percentages are based on the employee salary. So it's a direct correlation between the amount the district pays on behalf of the employee based on their total salary. And you can see why we pay attention to it because this becomes in a significant cost, especially if you have a growing compensation. When you think of total compensation, this is a big piece of it. Okay, so now we're going to move into highlighting our, our revenue and expenditures data that you see in the proposed budget. For revenues, we begin with our revenue forecast that shows total operating budget of eighty six million, seven hundred and twenty thousand dollars. This forecast includes all the previous local factors I already covered and the lower expected property tax forecast. When we look at the total projected expenditures on the next slide, you can see right off the bat, and I know we bring this up and say it every year, but staffing is by far the largest expense we incur as a district. Representing almost eighty percent of all expenditures. And that is typical and common amongst all school districts. It's a people business. It's an education that it should be your largest and is your largest expense. The total anticipated expenditures are estimated to be a slightly over eighty four million dollars for next year. But that does not include the proposed transfers that we had talked about on a previous slide to our capital improvement program, a facility repair replacement program, plus the three hundred thousand dollars. For fund thirteen, our nutrition services program. When you account for those transfers out of our general fund. When you account for those transfers out of our general fund and add that to the expenditures, it still results in a balanced budget. So even though we're transferring ourselves money into different accounts, I just want to make sure the board understands that still, even with that transfer, we still have a balanced budget for '24-'25. When you look through the proposed budget, and there's a section where you are comparing this year's estimated actuals versus next year's budget, there are specific line items that I want to call out for your attention, because they're fairly significant in terms of the assumptions used to make the changes. The first one being for maintenance, and you notice the object codes on the left. The object code for maintenance, that is specific to staffing. This is a result of an increase of one new maintenance worker that is going to be used to support the high school and district ancillary office spaces, and this is something the board had already approved, and that's why you see the increase. It's for the one new additional maintenance worker in that category. The other benefits, that is a direct reflection of retirements and non-replacement of two certificated staff members, and that was a direct result of the retirement incentive this year. So that money was what was used for the retirement incentive payoff, and obviously, we're not assuming that same amount next year, and that's why that is a savings. As far as the computer equipment, working closely with technology, we're able to identify some savings as well as coming off, we've come off several large years of technology purchases. And again, I would correlate that to the COVID relief dollars we got, we spent a large portion of that on technology. And so really, as we were kind of getting back to a business as usual with our refresh, and I appreciate, I don't know if he's not here, but Mr. Morrison and his team in tech, because they've been very thoughtful in working with us and our business team on going through their refresh workbook. Other insurance, this is a category that's increased, and the simplest way I can explain it is we're receiving bills from previous insurance providers based on the changes related to the elimination of the statute of limitations for sexual abuse and molestation cases and their increased liability, all stemming from Assembly Bill 218. All districts are experiencing this, and they're calling them assessments. And just so the board has some picture, we talked about this a lot in our JPA meeting for our liability insurance. It's ranging anywhere between $25 and $45 per enrolled student is kind of what you're seeing as far as your assessment bills. We don't have any indication when they're going to stop, so we're basing the budget on this year's payment that we have to make, and that's why you're seeing it carried into next year. The miscellaneous outside vendor, that reflects usage of one-time funds to make purchases this year that are not assumed to occur next year, because those one-time dollars are gone. Now, when I say one-time dollars, that could be grants, and CTE is a great example of that. We don't budget for the revenue for those grants until we have a source document or the money in hand, and then we budget at the same time for the expenditure. So if we do see an increase in this category, you'll see a subsequent increase in revenues as well as expenditure. And then internet, kudos to the board. This action you took this year for a new contract for internet services through Orange County Department of Ed that resulted in savings as compared to contracting with Cox directly, and that's now reflected in the budget. So thank you for that. And again, another kudos. You see in theater lighting, this is another item the board took action on this year that dedicated a portion of the Arts Music Discretionary Block Grant to support the lighting improvements at Artist Theater. So again, thank you. New equipment, and last, we see a reduction in the amount budgeted for new equipment, for equipment that cost over $5,000, and that is primarily attributed to pulling out CTE or Career Technical Ed purchases that were supported by the CTE or CTIG grants. And again, these purchases will likely be added back in once we know exact what our allocation will be in terms of this program. But again, we'll see increase in revenue tied to the same amount for expenditure in that case, but that is why it's not in the preliminary budget proposal. After accounting for the anticipated revenue, less expenditures and transfers, we maintain a very healthy ending fund balance of roughly $22 million for next year. You can see the breakdown of the restricted resources identified in the ending fund balance, which are planned to be spent but just haven't been identified on exactly how yet. Each category has various restrictions, but I wanted to show this as all except the routine restricted maintenance account reserve will likely be spent next year. And while breakdown's not shown for the assigned category, I just want to remind the board that it does represent the $10 million dedicated to support the facilities program and still maintained in the general fund, $300,000 carried over for textbooks, and $2.2 million still set aside for board goals and priorities for potential one-time funding or dollars. On this slide, we see, just really provides a summary of the revenue expenditure data I've already provided throughout the presentation in a simple bar chart. As you can see, the revenues are projected to slightly increase as well as the expenditures with the large increase in '25-'26 in the expense, because that does account for the $10 million transfer. But again, just reiterating that we, throughout the entire multi-year, and we show five years, it's only required to show three years of a multi-year, we maintain an extremely healthy fund balance, getting back to the same levels of fund balance we have today by '28 and '29. So that concludes my budget presentation on the proposed '24-'25 budget for your information tonight. I know it's quite a bit to digest, but as you take time to review all the information, please do not hesitate to reach out to me with questions or provide any feedback prior to us bringing this back on June 10th for approval. Thank you.
Thank you. Board questions?
Did you think, Jeff, that it's, that board goals and priorities, it's 2.2 million?
Yeah, that's what, it's in the 12.2 million, you see in there, 2.2 of that.
I think I just forgot something, but when I looked at the multi-year projections of the general fund, the revenues are greater than the expenditures for this year. But when I, at the last slide, it looks like we end with our expenditures more than our revenues.
The light blue, the left light blue are the revenues, the expenditures are the dark blue on the right. The reason you see the dark blue in '25-'26 way above is because that's identifying that $10 million transfer that we're unfolding in.
Oh yeah, no, I was looking at the first year, the rev, because usually it comes out even at the end in the sense that you're spending what you, right? So why are the expenditures higher for the year?
Good question. So estimated actuals is based on our current budgeted dollars. As we close the books and we get to unaudited actuals, you're going to see, there's a lot of funds that have been encumbered that aren't necessarily going to be spent, and you're going to see those expenditures drop and fall more in line with the revenues. And more than likely, it's not going to be as large as we may have had in the past, but we're going to have some carryover of surplus of both restricted and unrestricted funds.
Great. Okay, thank you.
Other questions?
I'll just, I'll make one comment, Mr. Dixon. So even with our healthy reserves, our $12 million assigned, including the $10 million that we have allocated for the CIP, I still appreciate that we're looking at, you know, this specific line item changes, looking at ways to bring down the cost of internet, looking at ways to, if we're done spending one-time funds, not replace them with new vendors or new things, looking at how we control our technology device replacement plan, because a lot of the little things can add up to be a lot. So I appreciate that, the healthy fund balance, and I also appreciate the sharp pencil at the end of the year, so thank you.
Well, thank you. I think that's really important, and I think it also reiterates or shows that when we, as staff, make these recommendations for switching to OCDE versus contacting directly with Cox, and we say there's going to be a savings, well, this should be reflected in our budget documents. So I wanted, that's why we kind of highlighted those for you, and again, kudos and thank you, because I appreciate being able to sharpen the pencil.
Again, Jeff, would you thank your team for all the work that they put in on this? And again, I will emphasize, this is expansive information for us, keeps us well-informed, and that's very, very important, and I have great confidence in your, all the data that you present to us.
That means a lot, thank you.
Thank you. These are information items tonight. They'll be coming back to us in different meetings for votes of approval. So we can move to our first action item under nine, Business Services, approval of agreement with STS Education to replace and install new security cameras at Laguna Beach High School in an amount not to exceed $140,000. Do we have a public comment on this?
President Vickers, no, I see none on nine.
Thank you. Mr. Dixon?
Yeah, so this is for the replacement of all of the security cameras currently just at Laguna Beach High School. Working with Technology Services, we utilize the California Multiple Award System to get quotations from four vendors who all qualified and had active current CMAS contracts, or that's what California Multiple Award Schedule stands for. And basically, what that means is the CMAS is a competitive bidding process put on through the state of California that includes goods and services. So when you hear CMAS, you can have installation and purchase of a product. When you hear piggyback bid, you can only purchase a product, you can't have any service connected to that bid. So that's why the CMAS is important. Some interesting components of this is we are also including about $25,000 of contingency within this approval for not to exceed of $140,000. And essentially, that gives us some flexibility to add some additional cameras to the high school. Some examples would be like the bike area over by the pool, we've heard some requests for, or even outside areas, and I know Carter, you're familiar with that. And that gives us some flexibility to run the cabling and add the cameras in those locations. And what's nice about this camera system as well is that it's cloud-based. So currently, we maintain actual servers to host all of our camera data on. Those servers can have problems, as well as they have maintenance, replacement, and repair costs, so that will go away. In lieu of that, the cloud-based services are about $9,200 a year, which is essentially a wash when you look at a five-year run cycle of having the servers versus paying for the cloud-based services. And what's also nice is there are enhanced features available with these cameras and their software that allows for some type of recognition system. So if you were to say, look for something with a red, or someone with a red shirt, it might be able to pull out some of that information. So we're recommending awarded, again, the base, the lowest bid that we received on the four CMAS proposals was about $114,000. We're recommending not to exceed of $140,000, just so we can add the additional cameras as needed or determined by the site.
Questions?
Monitors these cameras. They are not monitored, they are not actively monitored, that's why we put up the signage that says they are not. It's really just for security if there's vandalism, and you can look up, there's some type of issue after the fact, but it's not something that's actively monitored.
Or he's being watched. I wanted to make one quick comment. There was, it's been some time and space since this happened, but there was a lot of parents that were interested in better surveillance around all of the public bike parking, since many campuses, bikes are parked on the actual campus. On ours, they're parked on the sidewalks before you get into campus. And then I think we're also unique that we have a public street that goes between two of our facilities, that's, you know, kids are crossing the street and going onto the sidewalk to go to the parking lot and to go to the aquatic facility. So I think where we have some flexibility to add additional cameras, obviously within the law, is definitely something we've heard about from the community.
I'm really glad that we're going to have the chance to have cameras at the bike facility. I've read that some high schools have added cameras to the bathrooms to monitor drugs, and I wonder, we're probably not. I mean, I've.
No, our policy is fairly clear. Anytime there's a reasonable expectation of privacy, you cannot have a camera in that location, and that.
I assume they were just like where you wash your hands.
We need to have, if you're going to have discussion on that, we need to have a motion.
I move that we support this recommendation.
Thank you. Motion and second, any discussion? Student vote.
In favor.
Four members on favor. I oppose, carries 5-0, thank you. Our next action item is Human Resources, 10, approval of the revised student instructional calendars for the 2024-25 and 25-26 student instructional calendars. And Mr. Holland, public comment, do we have a public comment?
Yes, you have free speech, of course. Comment in order, I received, Morgan Lamb. You'll be our first speaker, you'll be followed by Liz Black, and then by Erica Rahal. Yes, Morgan Lamb, L-A-M-B. And Morgan, you have three minutes.
Okay, great.
Yeah, I don't think we need a timer, but you want to pull one up, Swaber? We should do it, yeah, okay. So just give us a minute to get the timer up, get transitioned over to that.
I'll make it quick. I'm suffering from allergies, so sorry about the voice. So I just wanted to come up and speak about being in support of changing the next two years' calendar to match the approval that you guys had at the last board meeting. I am a Laguna Beach alumni, and now I have the ability to have my children here as well. I have two at El Moro, and I see the impact of especially, you know, having that easing into the school year of starting on a Wednesday or Thursday after summer, I think is really important to do, to ease those kids in, especially at a younger age. Or if you do a lot of sports or something during the summer, I think it's nice to ease in, as well as having those campuses aligned, I think is really important. As our, as our, like as my children age through, you know, having the staff development day is the same across campuses, I think just support that, as well as having that week off. I did extensive research across, you know, scientific journals. I'm a research scientist, so I definitely love data and numbers and all those sort of things. So finding that, like, giving that break after 13 weeks of instruction, I think is really critical across both primary and secondary education, just to decrease stress along our students as well as our staff, and just make sure that there isn't that brain fog that happens, or increase of that absentcies that we were talking about could increase if you don't give those kids that break or give the staff the break. I know health-wise, we all just do a lot better. So I just want to say, you know, from an alumni as well as a parent now, I really support the change in the calendar. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lamb. I'll call Liz Black to the podium. Yes, you'll have three minutes, and then after those will be Erica Rahal. Go ahead.
All right, hello. Hi, I'm Liz Black. Good evening, everyone. I know it's late, so I'll just be really brief. First of all, I do want to say thank you so much, just a big shout out to you guys just for really listening to us. I actually, I guess I missed the last meeting, but I heard that you guys voted on changing the calendar for the 2026 to 27. So when I found out, I was really happy, and I felt like you guys really heard us, and I really do appreciate that. I realize you guys are in a position where you have a lot of feedback from the community, and you're trying to, you know, look at all factors, but the fact that you guys listened to us and made that change really means a lot to me as a parent, and, you know, a lot of my friends and teachers who I talk to about all these fun things going on in the district and specifically the calendar, everyone's really, really grateful. So I just want to, first of all, say thank you so much. And then I'm also here to also share that I would really love to request that you guys consider changing the 2024 to 2026 calendar. For me as a parent, I think my number one priority, you know, especially after COVID, is I really paid attention to the mental health of my two children. And I know it's not just me as a parent, but when you look at how hard the teachers work, the kids work hard, you know, everyone, the administrators work really hard as well, and to have that week off and to start the two days, Thursday and Friday, I just feel like, I don't think I realized what an impact that would, that made until we experienced it this year. And when I saw how happy my children were, they didn't mind going on a Thursday because they knew that they, you know, in two days, they'd have a weekend. So for me, I guess, I'm sharing just from my heart, I feel like the mental health component of it is really important to me as a parent, that we all give, you know, everyone that time off. And then if you think about it in November, because we're in school from, you know, I think I said this point last time, we have summer, and then we go, you know, all the way through November, at least they have that time off where they can just unwind and rejuvenate. So I just feel like it's really, really important because the kids go back in December and then they have finals. So at least they have that time off in November, just to kind of regroup, know that they can take a break and be ready to go. So my request is that you please consider changing the calendar for the full week off, start Thursday, Friday from two thousand twenty-four to two thousand twenty-six. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Black, and I'd like to call Mrs. Rahal. And I don't see any other speakers, but after Ms. Rahal, is there anybody that's wishing to speak from the audience? Okay, go ahead.
Hello, LBUSD School Board. I spoke at the last two meetings. And as a reminder, my name's Erica Rahal, and I'm a mom to three children in LBUSD and currently the PTA Council President for all Laguna Beach schools. PTA appreciates your attention to the school calendar and for voting to approve the twenty-six, twenty-seven school calendar. The families we represent, thank you for that as well. The online petition we started two weeks ago has shown an increase in support. And as of today, we have received four hundred seventy-five signatures, encouraging that gentle start to the new school year, a Monday-through-Friday Thanksgiving break, and a K-through-12-aligned professional development non-student days. So tonight I'm here to reiterate the mission of the California State PTA, which is to positively impact the lives of all children and families. Due to our stakeholders having an overwhelming amount of support around the proposed calendar change, I'm here speaking on their behalf. We would like to see the changes from the two thousand twenty-six, two thousand twenty-seven school calendar reflected for the next two years, two thousand twenty-four through two thousand twenty-six. We would like to acknowledge that caregivers and families are not the only ones that would like to see this new adoption. Countless teachers and staff have expressed their desire for the two thousand twenty-four through two thousand twenty-six calendars to match the approved one. PTA maintains alliance to our hard-working teachers and staff. The alignment of these calendars will institute uniformity for families, stakeholders, and teachers. The consistency will allow all of us to confidently plan for the upcoming school years while prioritizing attendance for meaningful instructional days and securing childcare when needed. Thank you again for your partnership and leadership in our community. Thank you.
Thank you. President Vickers, no other speakers? Mr. Conlon?
Thank you. So at the May ninth board meeting, as you know, the board approved the Calendar Committee's revised, recommended twenty, twenty-two, twenty-two, six, twenty-seven student instructional calendar with the following configuration. An eighty-day first semester for students that includes starting school on Thursday and ending at winter break, five non-student days at the Thanksgiving fall break, a winter break for students that does not exceed two weeks in duration, and the alignment of the K-five and secondary non-student days on January fifteen. So staff recommends the board approve the proposed twenty-four, twenty-five, and twenty-five, twenty-six student instructional calendars following the above-approved calendar configuration. Also note that starting in with the original Calendar Committee recommendation in two thousand eighteen, spring break was uncoupled from Easter, and the six-week instructional period was established between winter and midwinter and spring break to all future recommended student calendars. Last April, the board voted to shift spring break up to, up a week to align with both Easter and Passover for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. So the twenty-five, twenty-six calendar that's being provided tonight has that configuration in it. But I wanted to bring that to your, the board's attention, to the board's attention as well, in case you wanted to reconsider that.
Thank you. Board questions? Can I ask for a motion, please? Any discussion?
I'm definitely in support of the, of both calendars. But I do wanna apologize. I did hear some, from some parents who have vacation plans and flights that they need to change, and also apologize to some of the businesses and merchants that thought the other plan was what was gonna happen this summer. And I, I think that could have been avoided if we had a, had Zoom capable in here. I was the one that wasn't at that meeting, so it was a two-two vote. And I could have easily zoomed in, but that wasn't available. And I've asked before if we could have Zoom put into the Thurston Library. And I'm asking, I'm asking again. All of us have had to be absent for one reason or another during the year. And for something important like this, we might be able to zoom in, we might not. But I'm asking that we have the Zoom capability because this went on for a lot longer than it needed to.
So just for clarification, all of our board meetings are live-streamed and can be viewed by the public. A board member may not just view a board meeting and comment. If a board member is going to be absent and they provide the necessary information, we post an agenda seventy-two hours in advance with your location and phone number. And at that point, you may participate via Zoom, which has always been the case. Under new Brown Act guidelines, if there's an emergency, you may also zoom in under different criteria. But that's a new guideline set forth just this year. But board members have always been able to zoom in, or call in for that matter, with seventy-two hours notice, as long as the agenda is published with the board member's location and that members of the public may enter wherever the board member is to join them. The one criteria is if you are out of the country, it is nearly impossible to do so if you don't have internet or a place where the public can easily reach you. Aside from that, we have done out-of-the-country in the past, but it is very, very difficult. But there's no restriction for a board member attending a meeting remotely if it is publicly noticed.
I, I thought I was told I couldn't zoom in. So I can zoom in and you can see me and I can talk? Well, why was I told I couldn't do that here? I was told we could do it, I mean, I know, I've done it before at our other, when we met at the district office, but I was told I couldn't do it here.
The only reason that would, you would not be able to do that is if it was not publicly, publicly noticed. So if we did not know you were not able to attend until the day of the board meeting or the day before, or even the day before that, and it was not publicly noticed, you would not be able to zoom in or make, or call in. It must be publicly noticed at the time that the agenda is posted under the requirements.
What your location is, so-
Okay.
You know, say you decided on a trip last minute.
I was told that I could-
Could I, um, yeah, and that's a great conversation, I think, that, you know, review protocols in our next board, protocols workshop, maybe we have one in the summer or the fall. But I wanted to pivot back to the important comment that Mr. Conlon made about the six-week progress reporting periods and the Passover, Easter in the spring. So could we, would it be okay with the board to just look at that a little bit? Mr. Conlon, you said that this is in the twenty-four, twenty-five recommended calendar.
It's just one of the years.
It's one of the years.
It's the twenty-five, twenty-six calendar.
Twenty-five, twenty-six. Because we did hear some feedback from secondary teachers, pretty strong feedback about equal grading periods, the six-week, six-week grading period. And I think, you know, when we deliberated on this in the past, you know, we were trying to have more inclusion, right? So more inclusion, more, if you could capture two holidays, that would be great. If we're gonna pivot back and forth, I can see how that's, that would be hard, right? To have, some years you have a seven- or eight-week instructional segment, and then other weeks you don't because the religious holidays move around. So I guess if you could more succinctly explain on twenty-five, twenty-six what the options are.
Yeah, so looking at the two thousand twenty-five, two thousand twenty-six calendar, the option aligning with the, with the six-week kind of instructional gap, it would shift from where it's currently placed for March thirtieth through April third, it would shift to April sixth to the tenth. That would give us the, the, that would provide the, the six weeks of instruction gap between midwinter break and, and winter break. Midwinter break and spring break. So again, it was, the board voted to shift up a week to the week of the thirtieth. Again, the other option would be moving it back to the week of April sixth.
And then also related to that, I noticed because of our eighty, one hundred for semester, second semester, that the second semester gets quite long in the tooth after, you know, even, I was counting up on the twenty-four, twenty-five after spring break to the thirteen-week or whatever the comment that we've been hearing repeatedly in the fall. We have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine weeks of instruction without a break. I know we're sunsetting into the summer, but it's still nine weeks. So is there an interest from the board to, that was just an example on twenty-four, twenty-five, but going back to what you just told us, to try and maintain six-week blocks of instruction between midwinter break and spring break? Is there any interest?
Part of the difference at the end of the year is all the testing. I mean, the period of instruct-
Secondary, yeah, but-
Secondary. But the period of, well, there's testing in elementary also, but the period of instruction is not the, as long as the period in the fall. Even though the number of weeks is, is almost comparably long, it's still, you know, the testing, if, I mean, this year, they, they've done AP testing, right, at the high school? So they started, there's a lot of that not actual in, in classroom instruction.
True, but Mr. Conlon, the comment that we heard was trying to get a six-week progress report, a break, and then another six-week progress report, is that an interest of staff?
Yeah, that's been, that's been an interest that the staff has expressed. And it was what led to the original recommendation in two thousand eighteen. And it was reiterated in, in the recent calendar committees as well.
So, yeah, I haven't been at the, you know, I haven't gone through all of the instructional, I, I, I've been through that particular discussion. And I come from a district where all of the holidays, all of the vacations were tied to religious holidays. So they were all over the place. So I'm just trying to understand what the difference is here between, like, why it is that, that makes a difference in terms of teacher practice.
Yeah, so going back to, prior to twenty, twenty, twenty-twenty, or twenty-twenty-eighteen, sorry, when the, the discussion of shifting from Labor Day. So as they were looking at all aspects of the calendar, during, prior to, to the shift away from Labor Day, it was always linked to Easter. So it was, it was constantly moving, like, the, the gap in between the breaks was shifting based on where Easter is on the calendar. So in those discussions with that original committee, they looked at, okay, what from an instructional standpoint, and having, having consistent kind of blocks of instruction, they agreed that it would make sense that, that there's, there's value in having those consistent blocks of instruction. So to break the, the week away from Easter and just have it be more, more systemic and aligned with those, those, those blocks. And again, it, yes, it's about nine weeks from spring break to the end of the year, but with about two weeks of testing, it comes up pretty close to a similar level of, of instructional time and, and blocks of instruction.
So again, I'm not, I'm just trying to understand why having a week in there impacts. I'm not arguing against it necessarily, I'm just trying to understand it. Why having a week in the six weeks? You know, that doesn't perfectly align with the grading schedule. Because we, we do that at Thanksgiving now, for example, right? We put a week right in the middle of a grading thing, so I'm not quite sure why it's different.
Yeah, it's, I mean, depending on the time of year, like, it doesn't work out perfectly either way, right? But the, if there, in your, there is value, obviously, to connecting it to a holiday, right? And where people, where a holiday that people may be missing school from. So on the, there's also value to, like, a six-week cycle. So it's definitely on the, when you're thinking through intervention cycles, they're typically at least five to six weeks. I would say six weeks is, is kind of the standard. And the, still, but again, like, you're thinking, like, you shared the nine weeks, right? Like, the cycle would probably end up being six weeks in there, and then you would get to the end of the year, and there'd be some state testing and break it up. And the fall, they try to fit in two six-week cycles. There are some interruptions to it. But in an ideal world, like, six weeks is a nice, is a typical, we could do an intervention, you can assess kids, and then when there's a chance to move them out of that intervention, six weeks, you've got enough runway or weeks to, like, do that full intervention.
Yeah. I, I guess I understand. It's just that, like, when we want a week off at Thanksgiving, it doesn't really matter to do it in the middle. But if we wanna, I mean, I don't think it's a huge deal. It just seems, you know, like, I would never suggest moving the weeks around by, like, two weeks and trying to capture all the holidays. But it felt like if we were capturing one and it was easy to capture the other because it was only two days away, it made sense.
I mean, I think I, if, and again, in an ideal world, Thanksgiving would be like the first week of November for us, right? And then we would have six weeks-ish prior, and we have six weeks after. That one, obviously, because of, of, of the nature of when it always falls, it's just not possible. But in an ideal world, like, we would, we'd want that week to be right around the end of October, early November, so then that would break up that semester.
The holidays in the spring move around, which makes it more difficult where Thanksgiving doesn't move.
No, I know that. I wouldn't suggest that when you're trying to tie it to the holidays. I only suggested that if there was a year where they were that closely aligned.
Which is what's actually, what's being recommended, was, that's the question.
Yeah, no, I know. So I was, I'm just trying, I'm not trying to argue for one way or the other. I'm trying to understand if there's a reason to change it back that really makes a big difference or that represents something that's problematic. I'm, again-
Yeah, my, my recommendation, when you're looking at the calendar that you approved previously last meeting, is one where you would detach it because you essentially would be coming back from, you know, midwinter break, going to school for four weeks, and then having the break because it's early. So in that instance, no, right? But when it is close, when it's five weeks, you know, I think that's something that the, is definitely within, you know, is it a make or break? I don't get the sense that it is, but a four-week would definitely be like, okay. Because then the end of the year, it's like twelve weeks. But to your point, right, when it's close, it's something that I think the board should consider.
And I, I, I did, and this was kind of for, for board deliberation, right? Which, which value is more important to us? Is the instructional ideas that have been put forth important? Are capturing both holidays and years where we can and maybe a slight lack of consistency more important? Or how the day is gonna follow, like, if we have only four weeks between midwinter break and spring break? That's really not great. Even five weeks, I would say, if we just had a week off, we go to school for five weeks, and then we have another week off, which is what's being proposed in the twenty-five, twenty-six, right? Which is why I'm contemplating and trying to get some, if anybody else feels that way.
And then three weeks later, you have two weeks off.
Two weeks off, I know.
So it's the same principle.
I know. So in the twenty-five, twenty-six calendar, if we move spring break, which currently is set to start with a five-week gap because it's the thirtieth, March thirtieth, if everybody's looking at twenty-five, twenty-six, you know, it's going, after five weeks in instruction, we have another week off. If we wanted to move it to April sixth, and we wanted to just be consistent with six-week gaps, we could. Or if we wanted to look at it year by year and decide on the best thing, Dr. Blower is saying that's fine, too.
Yeah, I just, I want to be clear, you cannot vote on a twenty-five, twenty-six calendar. You would have to table that because it's not what we sent out to the community. We did not notice a different calendar. So I apologize that that was brought up as an option for you to vote on tonight. It's not, we didn't, we didn't give you that option to vote on. So it is what it is. If the board wants us to bring that calendar back, you can, you can. You can ask us to detach it from this, and we can make a motion to only approve twenty-four, twenty-five. If you want to have another meeting to talk about calendar, please let me know. But as it's presented, it's, that's all you can vote on. You cannot change it.
What, you're asking Kelly would, would give a six, six, and nine? And if we stay with what's presented so that we could approve it tonight, we have a six, five, and ten?
That was a lot of numbers you threw at me, and it's almost nine o'clock. President Vickers, could you say that again?
Okay, what's presented is, okay, I'll say what I said, I think exactly what you're suggesting would give us six, six, and nine. And if we go with what's presented here that we can approve tonight, it gives us six, five, and ten. The twenty-five, twenty-six, same one you're talking about. But we-
It has to go back, but it would be six, six, and nine as opposed to six, five, and ten.
Yes, the, the, I'm looking at the twenty-five, twenty-
That's what we're talking about, right.
So right now you have a five-week gap between the two.
Right, right.
So the idea was that we would amend what we're approving, what Dr. Blower is saying, that we can't do that. So then I guess it becomes upon this board, do we want to have another agenda item on the calendar?
I don't know that.
We, can we approve the twenty-four, twenty-five calendar?
Well, we could, but then we're bringing something back and noticing the community again.
I see what Kirk Osborne is saying. It does make a lot more sense.
The motion on the floor is to approve both of these. So you have to vote this down as far as if that's, do you want to do something else? And I want, I wanted to make one comment. My first painful year on this board was where we started before Labor Day. We approved starting before Labor Day. It was just painful, painful, painful. I'm so delighted to hear that you're all happy with it now because you can't believe the bell schedule and the, and the calendar, you know, what it did. Do you remember that, Victoria? That it was just, this is just so refreshing. Thank you so very much, my PTA friends, for coming and supporting, starting in August. our August.
My, my closing comment would be, what we have recommended to you is what we're proposing for recommendation, which is, includes the feedbacks that the board previously approved. So no change from the 25, 26, other than the things that you voted and changed last time. So that's why I'd like, from staff perspective, that's what we're requesting that you approve.
Hey, my, the only thing I want to add is that, um, I'm, I'm fine with these two years of calendars, I'm fine with changing it. My one concern is that there is this big push to move to this calendar, which I understand. I, I know there were petitions, people came to speak, but that doesn't capture people who have made plans or maybe didn't want this changed. So I think that the schools, the district, the teachers or whatever, have to figure out how to be accommodating to those families who made plans, assuming a different, I, I mean, it's close to the school year and we're changing the date that school's going to start. So, um, you know, I, I just think as a set of schools, you need to figure out how to be responsive to the families who may be adversely affected by that. And, and that really gives me pause for this year, not the following year.
A hundred percent, and I think, you know, we, we ran into that, um, you know, this current year where we had a few folks that, you know, had made plans because of even prior, right? Um, but we, we still had high attendance rates and, and I would expect that it'll probably be similar, but we'll see, we'll be able to provide that data to you on the first day, those first two days as well, just to see. But we will communicate that out effectively, uh, as soon as the board makes, um, votes and tells us yes or no, and then we'll move forward, so.
Any further discussion?
Vote?
Yes, student vote? Thank you. Board members all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie's 5-0, thank you. Okay, we have action item 11, superintendent's category, A, approval of agreement with UTAPE Schools Incorporated in an amount not to exceed 6,500. Do we have public comment on this?
None received.
Thank you. Dr. Valoria.
Thank you. This is, um, a recommendation from several people that I've spoken with and Christian presented actually at the Axess Super Tennis Symposium and more recently at the Orange County School Board Association at Axess Joint Dinner, um, on artificial intelligence and how we can as school side administrators, district administrators and leaders leverage the technology in a way that is, creates more efficiencies for us, including, for example, work around single plan for student achievement, which you heard Sue's talking about tonight, the LCAP. Um, so he's, um, proposing to come in and train our team in August. Um, and we do two days of workshops and this will be the half day, um, Friday workshop that we have planned, so I request the board approve his contract.
Any questions?
Moved.
Any discussion? Student vote? Board members all in favor? Aye, opposed? Carrie's 5-0, thank you. We have consent calendar. Do we have any public comment on consent calendar?
I see none.
Okay, do we have board members who would just pull anything off consent? If not, then I'd like a motion, please, for consent calendar items C through O. Student vote? Board members all in favor? Aye, opposed? Carrie's 5-0, thank you. We have governance, reporting, board member reports.
Thank you for that. Um, two things I attended, one was the county-led environmental literacy workshop on May 10th that was here at Thurston. Really thoughtful presentations from the county, great collaboration with our own staff and leaders in the space from all over the county gathered here. It was really a nice workshop, so thank you for that, to Instructional Services and to Ms. Harwood. Uh, we attended open house at Thurston last week, also well done. Saw lots of engaged teachers. I, I've been struggling with how you do a middle school open house in the digital world where most of their work is on their computers. And I think, um, you know, kudos to the staff because they're starting to try and figure that out. It used to be a little more like, well, everything's on the computer and we're just kind of here shaking hands, but I saw a little more, um, interesting ways that they were trying to present and display and maybe even print out student work so that you could see it, and I really appreciate that extra effort. Um, and then lastly, I was up in Sacramento this past weekend at CSBA's delegate assembly. Um, we looked at the policy platform, this is our statewide organization, uh, we voted on what measures or bills to support or oppose. We took a straw vote on the school bonds measure that Mr. Dixon, uh, mentioned. I hope to see that on there, it would be 14 billion in school bond facilities money and that I think we need. We also talked about the funding maneuver for Prop 98. So if you get advocacy requests, even though that's not locally affecting us, we should engage in that advocacy because it's having a devastating impact on all of our local school districts. Um, and then a couple new CSBA things that, um, came out that I think would be interesting to board members. One, I printed you the brief that came out in the fall about AI in K-12, and I did make a suggestion that one of our local superintendents in Irvine, um, continue to include some of the disciplinary issues that arise with AI as well. I think it's completely missing from this brief, but I did print one for you guys. And then for Dr. Mayberry, they had this beautiful, large format piece of all of the documentation that is required. This is the best piece of literature that I've seen CSBA put out, and every board member in the room asked for more copies of this, so here you go. Those are for you and for Dr. Valoria and Dr. Canterbury, and you guys should take a look at this as well. It's very interesting about all the reports they make us do. And lastly, there's a bill, Senate Bill 1315, that's being introduced to make CDE, have to make a report on all the reports that they make us report on. No joke, I think it's, I think it's very interesting, they got standing ovation as well, because you start to see especially for small school districts, how much reporting we have to do and how, in some ways, it can take away from time spent with students and for students. So, um, that was my report, really good delegate assembly, and, um, they do want us to look, President Vickers, at our policy regarding who speaks for the board based on that Supreme Court case that's making its way through. There's some changes and maybe, um, different legal advice on board policy 9010 and 9121. So we should add those to our agenda. Uh, 9010 and 9121.
Um, I had a great phone meeting with the superintendent of Capistrano District, Chris Brown, uh, about the changes made in the job description for Director of CCA, and luckily we found a wonderful new person. I think everybody's going to be thrilled and that this person will do a really good job. Yeah, the person's been chosen. Yeah. Um, I had the opportunity to work with a number of our wonderful nonprofit groups in Laguna, and it gave citizens a chance to express opinions to me about school board business. I volunteered at the Gate and Garden Tour, which had over 750 people, the Charm House Tour, events at the Art Museum, and the two biggest items that people wanted to talk to me about for the school board were, of course, the swimming pool and Prop 28 for the arts. And I, I think we're addressing those both in meetings coming up. Also though, I wonder if you guys have run into this, as I instructed people if they really felt strongly about it to email the board or come to a meeting, I definitely got pushback from some folks saying that, you know, wait, you're, you're my elected official, we elected you, why can't you represent us? Why can't you express our views? What's the point of electing a school board member if they aren't going to represent us or speak for us? And I don't know if you, any of you have advice, if you get that kind of feedback when, um, people come to you with things and you ask them to write a letter, that they get pushed back?
I've always responded that there are five board members, each one has a vote, so it's important to share, that person needs to share to the five members, not ask one member to carry the message.
I attended the combined PTA council, it was a great meeting. It's, they all met their fundraising goals for the year, even the high school, Bonnie made their $5,000, which just amazed me how the little schools make 70 and then the high school is five. And a thing that I learned there was I tried to, I, I tried to pay off the last $170, but the, it wouldn't take my money because the, the company that does this, if you, if your goal's $5,000, it won't take any more money. So, so that was, that was a good learning thing. There's about 1,200 members to the, of the PTAs in all, at all schools, which I thought was very impressive. I also, um, went to the community, the community connections thing with, regarding safe, uh, about alcohol and drugs, and, um, they had an outside speaker who was, who was very good, and she's going to be here on the 30th of May, and so I don't know if we have any information on her or not. I, I wrote her name down. Heidi Swan. Um, the kids were just great in that, the, um, I also attended the staff appreciation at the board, since all of the other schools and staffs have the PTA and they do wonderful things with food and gifts and whatnot. On behalf of you, I gave, I bought plants for 20, for 20, 20 staff members, like two, two plants each, but I said it was from, from the board because we were, we, we, we were considering ourselves their PTA. That's mine, you may have about 101 minutes and 12 seconds.
Um, I attended the endowment meeting, which is always interesting, and obviously the school power endowment is, is doing well, it's a great group. Um, and then I did a lot of, uh, school things, um, the Thurston music concert, which was just last night, was outstanding. He does really amazing things with those kids from the beginning to the end of the year, it was very impressive. Thurston Open House, also really great, um, and, uh, like Kelly, I really appreciated some of the, um, uh, opportunities in the classroom, including in the math class, having a group problem that all the students got extra credit for if they could do, and there was a lot of problem solving in big groups with parents, it was fantastic. Um, our room also was great, I mean, it was just a really good open house, and I went to the final PTA meeting, um, which was, uh, really great. It was the best one to go to of the year because it, there was a lot of fantastic food there, but it was also good, good to see the, their election of new, um, uh, members and, and directors for next year, and it's just a fantastic group we have working on the schools.
Joan, I got to take just a couple seconds of your time, sorry, Victoria, I'm breaking the rules, but we saw your production and you weren't here last time, right? Were you not at the last, uh, meeting? We saw the dance, the dance production.
Right.
No, no, you weren't at the last meeting, and we're all like, the production, the dance spring production was fantastic, and I wanted to tell you that, it was amazing. It was the first dance production I had attended and I will, will not miss one from here on out, so you've converted me. Yes.
I had a little bit different, um, take on the Thurston Open House, what I, because you're there as parents, and, and what I've noticed is the interaction with staff members and the parents. Parents are all so eager to talk to the staff and they spend so much time with them and talk about their student in the class and that personal one-on-one back and forth is really great. Uh, then I know that the city, they're another bike safety program, and so really, uh, I see far fewer e-bikes at the high school than there used to be. I don't know what the difference is. I heard at one time that they get licenses and so that drops down, they rather drive, but it's, I, I know it's high here, but I think that's.
That's less parking.
Ratless parking, and there's, they, um, were emphasizing defensive, they called it defensive driving, but I mean, it'd be bicycle riding, so I think that's really important for our younger kids to have our police department help them learn how they have to be defensive of themselves as they're riding their bikes.
It's back.
But, um, in all the music evenings that we've been having, there were three this week, there's some more next week. It just, to me, uh, reflects how our programs have grown, the instructors that we have, and starting with more serious instruments, I think, in elementary school, but really, uh, building that program up, it's, it really has paid off, and that's benefit to the students. I wondered if there's, um, the AER, if we can have some publicity for those showcases and the mentors, because the mentors are really key to, okay, at the recognition, but I mean, as far as like out in the community, the publications that we put out, um, I think that was, oh, at the, I noticed there was a lot of emphasis on the reading lists and the book clubs that are planning for next year at the open house at Thurston. So, thank you. Superintendent's report.
Zero.
So we need a motion to adjourn for until our next meeting? Student vote? Thank you. Board members all in favor? Aye, thank you.